Meeting ZZ case 2024-03 Olive Branch First Meeting, the potential zoning resolution amendment discussion. Staff President this evening Joe Schaefer, Director of Development and Zoning, Paul Benson Deputy Zoning Director. Roll Mr. Schaefer.
Roll call Mr. Berner, Mr. Tyson, Mr. Left, Mr. Welch, Mr. Wester.
Here.
Statement of policy, this meeting may be recorded, such recordings are public record, may be posted online and could be subject to review in court. It is, as is the adopted policy of the zoning commission, all applicants will be granted an opportunity to make their formal presentation. The audience may be then granted an opportunity to comment followed by the applicant's response and questions from the commission. The chairperson may limit repetitive debate and reserves the following rights, to limit comment to items on the agenda, to limit public comment to five minutes per person, to restrict the number of times a member of the public is permitted to speak, and to enact any other reasonable ad hoc protocols or measures necessary to maintain a fair, safe, and orderly meeting. This policy was adopted by the commission to provide for the respectful, constructive, and efficient discussion of business schedule for consideration and to allow for proper due process as required by law. First item up are two meeting minutes sent by Mr. Benson.
I wasn't here for the 27th, so I don't know that, I mean, I can make the motion, but.
Motion, I was here.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Joe, do we need to do them individually or just in the hall?
You want to do it as one solid together motion, that's fine with me.
Do them separate. So read the script.
Okay. So I read right here where it says motion.
Yeah, you move to approve.
Ryan Wester moved to approve the March 27th, 2024 meeting minutes as presented or with the following amendments.
No, 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 as presented.
As presented.
A second.
Discussion. Mr. Schaefer.
Roll call Mr. Berner, Mr. Tyson, Mr. Welch.
Same.
Mr. Wester.
Here.
Mr. Left.
Yes. Those are accepted, and then Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the April 9th, 2024 meeting minutes as presented.
One second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Welch. Roll.
Roll call Mr. Berner, Mr. Tyson, Mr. Welch, Mr. Wester, Mr. Left.
Yes.
Those are accepted. The time is now 7:02 PM. Romanelli GW LLC requesting approval of a final development plan to construct an 11,700 square foot office building and a 5,327 square foot daycare building on 2.276 acres located along North Gateway on an unaddressed lot immediately northeast of 7107 North Gateway. PIN 31734201010017, Westerville, Ohio 43082, currently zoned planned industrial district PID, also known as North Gate Office. Zoning case number 2023-05, this is continued from April 9th of 2024. Any comments before we make the continuance?
Uh, no, they did request a continuance again to the June meeting. They're gonna be there because we got the plans for it this past Friday. Essentially what happened was, I think I told you the last meeting, the daycare is out, so they had to take time to redo the plans, but then right before they were ready to submit for this, the deadline for this meeting, they sent their stuff for their signage and it was to me a little too open ended for what we would expect for a final development plan. So I said, I think you and I need to work on this a little bit more, and they said, that's fine, but we need another month then to make those adjustments. So they have been working with me on that. So no concerns from staff about this request.
So Mr. Chair, I'd move to continue the public hearing for the subject final development plan application known as North Gate Office. Zoning Commission Case Number 2023-05 until June 10th at 7:00 PM in the Genoa Township Hall. Additional revised materials will be due to the Genoa Township Development and Zoning Department by May 20th, 2024 at 4:00 PM.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Second by Sebastian. Roll.
Roll call Mr. Berner, Mr. Tyson, Mr. Welch, Mr. Wester, Mr. Left.
Yes. Great, continued. Time is now 7:04 PM. And I apologize if I misread, misread this again, but Jermaine Holdings LLC requesting approval of final development plan amendment to increase parking and add an outdoor seating and recreation area on 1.15 acres at 6300 Frost Road, Westerville, Ohio 43082. PIN 31734201002000, currently zoned planned industrial district PID, also known as Campfire Brewing. Zoning case number 2024-02, this is continued from April 9th of 2024. All those speaking on behalf of Campfire Brewing, please rise and be sworn in. If you will speak at all on this account, raise your hand, do you swear the tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, be seated, you guys can come up to the table. Legal notice for this meeting was printed and published on March 23rd of 2024 in the Delaware Gazette, posted on at the Genoa Township Hall on March 18th, 2024. An attempt to mail notice of this hearing to all property owners within 500 feet of the subject property was also made. The following were marked as exhibits A through H, A, legal notice, B affidavit of advertisement, C sign in sheet, D application and plans originally received March 7, 2024. E fire marshal email dated March 18, 2024. Exhibit F staff technical review dated May 6, 2024 for May 13, 2024. G the staff memo dated May 6, 2024 for May 13, 2024. H all public comments received between March 7th, 2024 and May 13th, 2024. And exhibit I, the revised submission and plans received April 16th and April 25th of 2024. Mr. Schaefer, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you all probably recall this site from last month, I'm just gonna focus on the things that have changed. Number one, the number of parking spaces provided on the site has increased to 28. You can see they added a row of parking in that sort of just, I guess, above that light green area on the drawing there you see projected on the TV screen. I guess that'd be to the east of the outdoor recreational area. In the light blue area, so overall they've tried to do a much better job of sort of making some final decisions on what those outdoor spaces were gonna be, how they were gonna be designed, how that space was to be allocated. So that green area I was just talking about is still sort of the outdoor backyard game area, they have it labeled as cornhole backyard games, I think we all can imagine what that kind of stuff would be. In the blue area, that's the seating area, so they have, you can see there's eight, on the left side of that blue area, there's eight rectangles, those are tables, four person tables with probably some umbrellas, I believe per the spec we received, and then they have three fire pits with each with four seats around them. Again, we have typical design details for all that, and the fire marshal told me he's okay with the design of these fire pits, he's looked at that. Let's see, the outdoor area west of the existing building in that yellowish area, the bottom of the, below the building in this drawing, it'd be the west of that building. They now define as being continued outdoor storage like it is now, just to be used by the business itself. The, pardon me, let's try that again, the existing perimeter fence would remain, however, the gate separating the front parking lot from the rear storage area would be removed. They did add a second accessible parking space like we had talked about that they were probably gonna need. They've provided some clarification on those concrete block walled in bays where the landscape material used to be stored. You can see it says there walls to remain, area to be used for recreation such as chalk, washable, paint, connect for basically sort of a little kid's area. They were gonna have more of those, in my discussions with them as they were revising this, they had two more of them to the, that they were gonna use for that purpose, but I had concerns about it being such an area where it was likely going to be kids in there, being right up against the parking area, so they agreed and they, they removed those two, and so now the areas where those children would be are parallel and in line with the outdoor recreational area with behind the plantings not occurring right next to where vehicles could potentially be moving in and out of those parking spaces. Seven total parking lots would now be provided to replace the two existing parking lot lights on the sites, they're actually improving the lighting. Obviously, I imagine there'll be evening activities here, so I'm sure having that area lit, that outdoor area lit, especially in the summer time is gonna be beneficial to them. The plans have been revised, but if, the landscaping plans have been revised, it basically show the landscaping is there and that was shown on the original approved drawings. There's a few shrubs missing that I've asked them to add, but big picture wise, substantively wise, I'm not terribly concerned, that's a very small edit at this point. So that did it for the memo, and the technical review basically reflected the same commentary, you can see the vast majority of the comments been crossed out. Just the comment remaining about the landscape plantings I just talked about, and then also comment about, I guess still some clarification about what some of those bays are gonna still be used for, that it remain, or they just gonna remain vacant sort of as is, or there're gonna be storage in there, you can see they also moved the dumpster, I neglected to mention that earlier. The dumpster was gonna be in that eastern parking road, that's sort of the top of that image, you know, where Paul Benson's got the little hand there. You can see they did take our advice and are gonna get some extra few steps in, I guess going out to the dumpster for the, for the employees to the back of the site, but I think that's gonna function much better for them, and I think you'll find whoever is probably servicing that dumpster for you is probably gonna be much happier to have it in that location as well. So that was really it, like I said, most of this was about getting the landscape on the plans, the existing landscaping, getting the sign that's existing on the plans. Just cleaning up the documentation, making it a little bit clear for the commission of what was sort of happening where and how things were laid out, so we've got the typicals on all the designs, so you know, big picture wise, staff has everything they think it needs to do the compliance review, there might be, you know, additional questions or comments from the commission, but from a compliance standpoint, I really don't have much in the way of concerns. Like I said, the only thing I maybe wanna know is just what's gonna happen with those bays that aren't gonna be used for the. But other than that, Mr. Chairman, unless there's any questions for me right now, turn it back over to you.
Welcome, turn both mics on, and then name and address, and then you're part of the presentation.
All right, Dan Haskins, 7278 Public Court.
Roland Reebe, 337 Leighton Court, Westerville, Ohio.
And Brett Hauser, 6103 Gresham Street, here in Westerville.
Couldn't make it tonight.
He's currently in Fenway Park, so yeah, he's, he's got a little better, I think. Yeah, we, you know, working with Joe and all the comments that we got from the last meeting that we had, really took that to heart and wanted to make sure that we made this exhibit specifically very much more clear and less squishy, I believe was the word we used last time. So we tried to make this a little more firm and, and explain what exactly we're looking out there, and it kinda made us look internally a little bit harder too, as far as how we actually want to lay this out, so. In regards to the two bays that we have kind of lost use of, we could see those also being used for outdoor storage type of activities, you know, since they're not necessarily in the line of sight for the kid play areas, so.
Or they could remain empty.
Yeah, they could just remain empty, we don't have.
We don't currently really have plans for them, given that they're sort of, you know, locked off and not great place to use, given the parking right there, so.
Yeah, I think it seems like we addressed most of the concerns, so if you guys have anything else.
We hope we did anyway, so appreciate the feedback.
Nothing else?
That's it?
Public comment on this one?
Good evening, my name is Rick Wieland, I'm at 9500 Britton Woods Drive. Just one comment for the board. As far as the parking places, looks like in the light blue area there, they have four tables at, or I'm sorry, eight tables at four each is 32 plus three tables at 12 is 44. Doesn't compute to what they have on their total for parking places on their application. Thank you.
Anybody else? Going once, going twice, all right, public comments closed? Questions, comments?
I guess one question I have is, I realize we've got two of these concrete, I'll call them bays, for lack of a better term, left open. I guess I'm gonna ask, should we ask the applicant for a commitment that it would only be left for storage of the recreational items and not something outside of, you know, I don't wanna see brewery equipment or things like that. Maybe I'm just overthinking this, but.
Intentions, what do you?
Intentions can be for the recreational stuff, yeah, that's fine, we don't, it would be really inconvenient to store brewery equipment way back there, so.
I guess what I'm.
You don't want it to be a storage.
A catchall for anything and everything that the business may have, so that it becomes unsightly or a problem or whatnot, or even a safety hazard for the patrons.
Yeah, we don't necessarily want the kids playing with that stuff out there either, so. Yeah, I mean, that could certainly be something that we say is only used for the recreation area, storage.
That was the only question or comment I had.
Yeah, with regard to that, or a comment to that, you know, it's, it's not indicated as storage on the plan. So as long as they adhere to that and don't store a bunch of brewery equipment back there, then they'd be adhered with plan. So I think that the plan already indicates that they're not allowed to store, store anything there.
Well, that's true.
To me, it's like, if you're gonna have these bays, you're gonna use it for chalking, okay, and you have kids there. Kids are so hard gonna go to these other bays, like you have to have some way of blocking it off, in my opinion. I mean, we're talking about kids, kids just see, oh, this is full of chalk, now we're moving on to the next one, then they're on the parking lot. I just don't think it's, either you block it off, I mean, that's my opinion on that. Cause, cause I think also the dumpster, doesn't the dumpster also need to be screened? So I mean, there needs to be something in front of dumpster too, like a gate or something, right?
Not necessarily, we require the screening from like adjacent properties, and certainly if it was up against residential, we'd ask for that, but on a site like this where it's always been outdoor storage, they're really not changing the use of what that bay is being used for. It's storing a different item, but it's still outdoor storage.
Well, but now you're inviting the public into
Yes.
that area specifically versus the contractor that would come in here to pick up a load of mulch or carry home or to get mulch.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with Ohio Mulch's operations back there, whether or not the public was able to get back that far into the site or not.
So I also wanna still say something about those planters with screed, with the lights. To me, they're not sufficient, like definitely where the parking abuts the cornholes, like I, I suggest something like this, something like, definitely, can you go back to the plan for a second, Paul? Cause I mean, like I, I know you put in parking blocks, but if you, if you're in a truck and you shoot forwards accidentally, okay, you're gonna be in those, in that area with all these kids. I mean, I just think it's not responsible for just having these, that's, that's very light, I mean, you just blow that over, I mean, needs to be something more.
Well, they've got parking blocks.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, with a truck you're going over there. I mean, it's, you're immediately, like normally in all our other, in all our other code, we have like, we have like distances from parking lots because of reasons, like because of a safety issue basically, and in this case immediately it abuts cornhole, I mean, I think you need something else to have more safety there, just in case something happens. And I personally suggest that along the whole area where the, where the, the driving aisle is. Cause I mean, you could probably make something yourself, I mean, you make a big wooden bin basically and fill it with dirt. Shouldn't be that costly, I don't, don't even think, and you can, most likely you have a forklift, I'm not sure for it, but you could probably even move it with a forklift if you later on say like, oh, I want this configuration a bit different, but something like that is, in my opinion, a safer solution.
All those boxes are planters, right?
Correct, yeah, the intent obviously with having those was to have like a concrete base, so like you said, it's not like movable by hand, but yeah, some, it's like, we have a pallet jack that we could do it, yeah.
So if you actually, think actually further down in the exhibit.
So they're all gonna have posts coming out of them, they're gonna be.
No, not all of them, so a lot of them will look like this.
I mean, it's all castes, but you just like run in that, with a truck and it goes immediately out of the way, something like that. I mean, that's, that's my biggest concern of the whole thing. If you allow that, I mean, if there's an accident, it's.
Are yours on wheels?
We were planning so that we can move them, cause remember for the other aspect that we were talking about, like to get stuff back behind or whatever, you were asking that we, we have them movable.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, that's just my biggest concern, definitely since that parking lot now encroaches that area, like last time it was only on the one side. I mean, then it's not really facing the activities, but now, I don't know, I just, I just have some issues with it.
If we were to put, say like those, those ballast or those
Ballards?
Ballards, is that what they're called?
Yep.
Along, say where the, the parking is there also, would that, would that help alleviate your concern?
How high are we thinking, how high is something like that?
Standard ballard, you can do 36 or a 48 inch ballard.
Maybe something like that would definitely do better.
Metal with concrete filled and you're going down three feet in the ground if you're gonna do it, I mean, that's, if you're gonna make it protective.
I mean, sure, I mean, I readily see a plan there, cause
Oh, okay.
I mean, cause technically you're short in landscaping, I know this was grandfathered in, but I mean, it would be better to have some landscaping, also just for the, for the.
Or some really big concrete planters.
Yeah, if the planter works, then I'm, I'd much prefer that also, so.
It's something that has some.
Some heft to make sure it doesn't come into the dining area, so let's make that some consideration.
Yeah, 100%.
All right, I wanna acknowledge the fact that the work that you guys put into this and do improvement, so thank you for improving what this was. Couple things, on page 59 of your text, you call out eight employees, but on all the other documentation, you call out three employees. So what is correct?
The, the eight would be, and maybe not onsite at all times, so onsite during operations, the, the majority of the time it'll be three. But then we would have like, you know, revolving staff of.
Eight total, but three at one time.
Yeah, typically.
Which is now we're getting to the parking calculation.
Sure, I mean, I think it's based on capacity, right?
Yeah, which we used it.
Capacity plus employees.
Plus three employees, which is how we get to thirty two.
Ninety six, if you divide ninety six by three, you get the thirty two plus the three spaces, that puts them at thirty five required spaces. They actually have thirty seven spaces onsite, I know I mentioned twenty eight earlier, that was twenty eight new spaces in addition to the nine spaces that they already have.
All right, so just from a final text clarification, you might wanna call out eight as eight total versus that. Two lighting questions, in the ADA spots out front, I don't see anything from a lighting perspective, is there something existing or not?
I believe there's one proposed on the opposite side of the parking.
That is way on the other side of the lot, which will be partially blocked by the corner of the building.
Is it not shown?
You've got a proposed one back there, but there's nothing over the two ADA spots.
Okay. Yeah, and then on the, I guess it'd be on the top side of that, Paul, on the opposite side is where we have.
Paul, scroll it down a little bit so we can see the parking piece.
Yeah, we do have one across, yeah.
But from a lighting perspective, I don't know if that's sufficient for the ADA.
Light at the top of the front? There, I think there is a light over top of the front door, now that I'm thinking about it, but that's all existing, so we're not, we weren't proposing to like change anything, but
Yeah.
But we can see if there's one above, and if not, we can potentially add one.
And then is there any lighting on the building itself, I mean, I know we've got string lights that we're gonna put up and you've called out what those things are, but I don't see any callouts for what's above doors or sconces or any other building illumination.
Anything on there?
Yeah.
Other than on front, on the front.
I think there used to be one on the back of the garage door that no longer exists.
Nothing there, yeah.
So that whole area behind it, it's outdoor storage breweries only, there's no lighting in that alley?
We have one proposed light, yeah, which is.
So the one back, okay. So there's nothing on the wall?
No.
There's no wall packs, no nothing? I think with, cause that, the door in the front is actually your main entrance into the interior portion, right?
There is an overhead light there.
Yeah, yes, and then the, yes.
You can see the parking lot, right, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to say which, which one they'll come through. I mean, we can't fully predict that, but intended is to be the front.
So probably gotta have a light there. If you put enough of a downward one on and not outward, you probably have enough illumination for the handicap spots as well.
And they'll probably get flagged during the building code.
I would think so.
Review, and they have specs for the downward facing lighting, the flush, and that would be what I would expect them to install if they're putting any new lighting in.
I imagine you're gonna get, it's gonna get asked, you know, they do the ADA review and entrance piece.
Yeah.
The parking, like Sebastian was saying, if you can make sure there's something of heft there and it's not easily moved. You're asking for a lot of people to do outdoor activities, which I think is great, but interacting with a parking and now being access, accessible into an active parking lot with some open areas, just keep that in mind.
Agreed.
Okay. Those are my comments, anything else?
I would, I would also definitely try to block these off somehow, that's my, like, my, just that you don't have kids running in there, that's all. A gates, fill it up with dirt, I don't know what you can do, but.
The point is well taken, yeah.
Just something at the end.
Can't remember if that one is full wall or if it's a lower wall at the moment, it's gonna be full wall.
There's just one block right now.
And, and so as a one block, I think you're right, that we should put some sort of barrier, because I have a one and a half year old and he has kids, we all have kids, we know how they work.
Should we, should we address the missing parking spot? Cause normally it comes from thirty six, go to forty four, there's, so there's one parking spot that technically still needs to be there.
I think as long as it's specified in the development text that there are eight total staff that are hired by the organization, but only three will be at a given time.
This is purely based on the amount of outdoor seating, cause there is forty four drawn in there, I mean, either you take a fire pit, I mean. This is purely based on the amount of outdoor seating, cause there is forty-four drawn in there, I mean, either you take a fire pit, I mean. Well, they just, um, you can, guys are gonna do it, or you throw another parking spot in, but.
Well, to me, you, they have two extra spots that they need, so really all they need to do is just change the math there.
So one extra would be needed, there's three per.
Correct. Yeah, so their outdoor seating, that number thirty-six on their plan would need to increase to, to address the amount of actual seats that are drawn in your plan, so that those are in concurrence with one another. And then you would just need to change that math, and I believe that math would add it by one or two, so you have enough parking spaces, but it's not, the math is not right.
I think there's one missing.
Is there one, is there, would there be one missing? It would need to have thirty-eight?
Yes.
We'll double check the calculation.
Forty-one spots.
Change the seating.
Is that forty-four outside?
It's forty-four. Plus. Wonder if. Oh, cause you're saying the indoor, the outdoor is forty-four.
Yeah.
For what was drawn.
Yeah, and then, then there's eight more, so for three per, per nine, so you have three more spaces, they ha- actually have two extra, but they would technically need an extra one, or they need to ask for a variant.
Yeah, sorry, my math was wrong there.
Are we counting the cornhole boards as?
No, the four, the four, four, the eight four-person tables, three fire pits, that's forty-four.
Oh, yeah, you're right, I'm sorry, I, I misdid the math in my head, yeah.
Sixty inside.
I did eight times three and not eight times.
So what do you, you guys?
That's a lot inside.
Yeah, so if we need to remove it. We could also.
Or a seat or two.
I mean, to get to the number you got on there, you'd need to pull two of the four-person table down.
We can take those out.
Okay, so we would have a max of six four-person tables and the three fire pits.
Works me.
All right.
I think that lighting's important to look at, because the Ohio Mulch probably operated more during the day and not at night, and this facility probably is gonna operate more at night than during the day.
An alternative, uh, for the parking, uh, sorry, for the picnic tables and the four-person tables is you could remove one chair around each of the fire pits and do three-person fire pits instead of four. That would remove one parking space, two, your, your choice. Just give me some options.
Thank you.
All right, divergence review.
So, Mr. Chair, um, per section twenty-seven oh seven point oh seven of the zoning, uh, resolution. Unless a deviation from development standards is specifically approved as a divergence, the same shall be complied with. Uh, and so the applicant has requested a divergence from section thirteen oh six point oh one of the resolution to allow for food truck service and outdoor seating in recreation areas. The question posed to us is do these diversion, divergences promote or not have an adverse impact? Uh, and I would suggest to the commission that the divergence, uh, does not have an adverse impact on the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the present and future inhabitants of the township. Does not have an adverse impact on the quality of life within the township through the protection of the total environment. Preservation of nuisances, nuisances and hazards and the provision of adequate light, air, and convenient access to property. Uh, assures the compat- compatibility of land uses which are either adjacent or in proximity to each other. Allows for the orderly development of all lands within the township to its appropriate use. Is also the most appropriate use of land to facilitate and provide adequate public and private improvements. And is consistent with the recommendations of the official Genoa Township Comprehensive Plan currently in effect.
Okay.
That being.
Anybody, anybody have any comments to that?
No.
That being said, I would move to declare the subject Final Development Plan Amendment Application, German Holdings LLC Zoning Commission Case Number Twenty. I gotta read through the top part.
Minor, 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 major.
That it would be a minor. Yeah, I was reading through here. No.
Sorry.
Right here, correct?
Sorry.
Okay. So I would declare this a minor, um. Amendment application, uh, for German Holdings LLC Zoning Commission Case Number Twenty to, twenty twenty-four dash zero two. Including all plans and materials, a minor amendment of the Final Development Plan per section twenty-seven ten point oh three of the zoning resolution of the. And thus not requiring subsequent action by the Board of Trustees. Uh, I'm making this motion based on the fact that, uh, actually the findings of fact with respect to the divergence of B through G of the permissible, uh, reasonings for a diversion. Uh, and frankly, this is a lesser impactful use, uh, in a planned industrial district than, um. The prior use of the property.
We have a minor motion.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Schaefer.
Roll call, Mr. Burnett. Mr. Tysman.
Yes.
Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Wester.
Yes.
Mr. Leff.
Yes. Okay, it is a minor.
So this part I will probably need a little assistance to make sure that we adequately document if there's any, uh, commitments. So I would move to approve the following, the subject Final Development Plan Amendment Application, including all plans and materials. And which has been deemed by this commission to be a minor amendment pursuant to section twenty-seven ten point oh three of the zoning resolution. Submitted by German Holdings LLC to increase parking and add an outdoor seating and recreation area on approximately one point one five acres of property located at sixty-three hundred Frost Road, Westerville, Ohio, four three zero eight two. Currently zoned planned industrial district, zoning commission case number twenty twenty-four dash zero two. Incorporating exhibits A through I and any commitments made by the applicant during this hearing, including. I think number one, reducing the table count, um, on the proposed outdoor area by at least four persons.
I would say reducing the occupant count by four, four persons.
Okay.
But yeah. Or it's three, technically. I think they're only required to reduce it by three.
Yes, three, yes, great.
Okay.
I like that. Any other proposed?
Having heavier planters around the parking area, preferably everywhere.
How do we wanna? Verbalize that?
Do we wanna list them out first and then make the motion, cause we're trying to get away from the motion by committee.
Okay.
Uh, approach, so I'm, I'm fine having the conversation, but I think we ought to have the conversation first and then.
All right.
List them out and then make the motion.
Let me withdraw.
It helps us make the record and makes the record a lot cleaner.
Let me withdraw my motion for the time being. And so we have one, the first commitment being to reduce the occupant count on the, uh, outdoor area by three persons.
Well, it's to match what they have in the wording, not what they have on the drawing, so the drawing to reflect what is in the wording.
I think it's two things, yeah. Right? Yeah, it's two things. One, they have to amend the drawing to indicate three less occupants, and then two, they have to get the text to match the drawing, yeah. So it's two things.
All right.
So the drawing and the text to adequately reflect the actual head count or occupant count in conjunction with the parking lot count.
Yeah, I like that.
Occupant and employee count, right? Cause there was that issue on page fifty-nine.
All right.
And.
More, more adequate protection for?
Heavier. Heavier parking protection? Or heavier vehicle protection?
Well, it's, it's.
Actually for the occupants.
It's patron protection, but.
Heavier patron protection for the outdoor areas?
Do we wanna limit that to just in front of there?
Parking blocks or the whole drive aisle?
Or the whole thing?
Heavier separation between vehicles and patrons.
To me, I'd rather see it everywhere, but.
Yeah.
I mean, definitely where the cars are parked dead.
Definitely an issue.
Along the drive aisle.
So basically along like the eastern per, edge of that planter, is that what we're talking about? So against the drive aisle and against the parking spaces?
Yes.
Sort of makes that bend, yeah.
Okay.
I would still wanna screen the, I mean, for, for me, it's just still like.
Are you saying screen the dumpster area?
No, I mean, I mean, I would prefer that to be screened, but, um, also just screen or make it inaccessible for children to use MS chalk.
I, I can come to that, cause I agree. There should be some sort of screen there.
I mean, maybe it's like those temporary screens, there's, what is it, there's metal fences on the concrete post that you just can put in front of it or something, I.
Yeah.
I mean, something.
Something just, I guess, to make it clear that you're not supposed to be in there, right?
Yeah.
So what, to apply a screen to?
To prohibit access.
And then, I always like to put a, I guess, I don't wanna call it a carrot, but a deadline for them to have to do, cause they're gonna have to revise the materials, sort of like we did with Gianmarco's of, I'm assuming, I, as I always recommend, that they do this before we issue the permit, but that would have to be a condition of approval. I'm sure they have no issues probably with that, I'm assuming.
As soon as you guys need it.
So we won't put a date on it, like we didn't do the last one, but you have to have all this done before the permit's issued.
Fair enough.
Okay, so you're not in a rush in three days to turn it back in.
So I guess to be, just to be clear, their approval doesn't represent the zoning permit. You'll still have to get a zoning permit from my office if this gets approved, but. It's basically, you're just providing me the materials that they approve and then we just issue the permit for it, so it's. That's the easiest, easier process, assuming we get all this stuff cleaned up.
All right, anything else?
All right, start again.
All right, so I would move to approve the following, the subject Final Development Plan Amendment Application, including all plans and materials which have been deemed by this commission to be minor amendments pursuant to section twenty-seven ten point zero three of the zoning code. A resolution submitted by German Holdings LLC to increase parking and add an outdoor seating and recreation area on approximately one point one five acres of property located at sixty-three hundred Frost Road, Westerville, Ohio, four three zero eight two. Currently zoned planned industrial district, zoning commission case number twenty twenty-four dash zero two. Incorporating exhibits A through I and the following commitments made by the applicants during this hearing. Number one, to, um, revise their final development drawing and their final development plan. Text so that both accurately align with the count of occupants as well as employees and the number of parking spaces. Number two, to provide heavier patron protection along the drive aisle. Number three, screening to prohibit access to unused concrete bays. And number four, the revised materials to be submitted before the zoning and development department issue the final zoning permit.
I second that motion.
Uh, sorry, I further move to approve the following divergences from the Genoa Township Zoning Resolution. A divergence from section thirteen oh six point oh one to allow for food truck service and outdoor seating in recreation areas. Uh, this motion to approve the subject Final Development Plan Amendment Application is based on the findings of fact and conclusions previously elicited. Um, which were B through G, that's boy through golf, um, with respect to the lack of impact or, uh. Use in conformance with the, uh, um, comprehensive plan.
All right, motion on the table?
I second.
Second? Discussion? Comments? Mr. Schaefer?
Roll call, Mr. Burnett. Mr. Tysman. Mr. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Wester.
Yes.
Mr. Leff.
Yes, motion passes. That concludes this meeting at seven forty-two. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it, look forward to seeing it come to fruition.
Hope to see you out there.
Thank you. Time is now seven forty-two. Mini Coastmen requesting approval of a final development plan to construct an approximately twenty-four hundred, that's two thousand four hundred square foot office building on approximately one point zero nine acres at five zero six four, south Old Three C Highway, Westerville, Ohio, four three zero eight two. Pin three one seven two four zero zero three zero one nine zero zero zero. Currently zoned planned commercial district, PCD, also known as the Olive Branch, zoning case number twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash zero three. All those speaking who are thinking of speaking on this and giving commentary, please rise, be sworn in, if you want to speak at all. Right hand up, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, help you God?
I do.
Thank you, be seated. Uh, legal notice for this meeting was printed and published on May first of twenty twenty-four in the Delaware Gazette. Posted at the General Township Hall on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, an attempt to mail notice of this hearing to property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property was also made. Following were marked as exhibits A through I, A, the legal notice, B, the affidavit of advertisement, C, sign-in sheet, D, application and plans originally received April fifteen, twenty twenty-four. Revisions received April seventeen, twenty twenty-four. Exhibit E, the traffic memorandum provided by the Delaware, by Delaware County on April tenth, twenty twenty-four. Exhibit F, fire marshal email dated April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. G, the staff technical review dated May sixth, twenty twenty-four, for the May thirteenth meeting. H, staff memo dated May sixth, twenty twenty-four, for May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. I, all public comments received between April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four and May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Schaefer?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a lot to present here, so I'm not gonna read the entirety of everything I've written, uh, for the sake of brevity, I'm gonna try to skip redundancies and, um. Items like that, uh, the memorandum, as you noted, is part of the record, um, as an exhibit. So, as you noted, the, uh, the applicant's looking to build an office building on the site, the plans are projected on the TV there, this is, uh. In case you have, uh, anyone in the room is still unsure, we're talking about right outside, right across the corner where the old Genoa Lawn Center, uh, used to be. Uh, this property is owned plain commercials, you noted in the subject of the Hoover watershed. The, uh, the, the space is obviously just to provide the applicant, uh, room to, um, operate their practice. Uh, as a, uh, mental health nurse practitioner, uh, the business would be known as the Olive Branch. Approximately six offices, two half baths, a waiting room, a break room, main floor storage, and an open storage room, uh, above, on the second floor. Uh, the existing accessory building on the property will remain, though its future use, uh, remains unclear. I imagine it's most likely going to be storage. Um, the size and height of the existing accessory building also need to be memorialized in the application materials, although there is a zoning permit on file for it, so as you'll see here momentarily. Um, I know we're all pretty familiar with the area, but, uh, just for the sake of the record, uh, the property immediately to the north, northeast, where the, uh, White Farm House is, is actually zone playing commercial and is operating as a dwelling. Um, the properties to the north and west are rural residential zone properties, that's where the new Mulberry Estate subdivision, which is currently under construction, is located. Obviously, to the south, you have Big Walnut Road, and then, uh, there's rural residential homes across the street to the south. And then to the east, also rural residential homes, um, across the south Old Three C Highway there. And all of those properties are also within the Hoover watershed, although most of them are, uh, not, nothing they do triggers the need to, uh, comply with it, but this project does. Um, for those who also don't know, as you can see on the drawing, there is a peanut-shaped roundabout that is going to be constructed eventually at the Big Walnut, South Old Three C intersection. I don't know the exact timeframe of it, but based, I know they're still in the right-of-way acquisition process, cause, um, myself and Administrator Wise met with, um. The company that the county hired to do the right-of-way acquisition, we met with them several weeks ago, but, um, nothing's been finalized even on our end yet, so. Usually it's right-of-way acquisition, and then they have to, once the project gets the green light and the funding, then it's utility relocation, and there's somewhere to vet the winds of the utility company as to when utility company's gonna get out and move all their stuff, and then the actual road construction begins, so I would say just, you know. My guess is still probably a year plus out from seeing any major activity on this site. That could always change, but, um, I don't, I don't think it's gonna start happening tomorrow, uh, that's for sure. There's a lot of interesting history to this site, uh, again, for the sake of brevity, I'm not gonna read through it, but it is entered in the record if nothing else for posterity. The old building essentially dated, dated back to the nineteen twenties and was over in the old Village of Africa in Orange, the best I can tell, and was relocate, or actually built in the early nineteen hundreds. or actually built in the early nineteen hundreds, and then relocated into Genoa sometime in the twenties, and I think it's had, uh, numerous uses over the years. The site itself, uh, its current zoning, a planned commercial district, is very unique. Best we can tell, it was put in place in nineteen eighty-seven when the two Genoa homes, uh, we had, zoning codes were merged into one. Um, and the zoning is unique because typically when you have a planned zoning district, you have a development plan that goes with it. This got put into planned zoning district but has no development plan on file, so it's caused a lot of, um, interesting discussions to occur over the years, uh, with, uh, the prior occupant of the site in terms of changes, and as well as, um, people who are interested in the site when it was on the market, as well as the, uh, the applicant this evening of how to resolve this. Basically where staff's position has been the past several years was, because it was a planned zoning district but didn't have development plan, the only way to modify the exterior of the site in any meaningful way was to go through the process of getting a final development plan approved, that's what we have told everyone who looked at this site or been on this site over the years. Despite the prior owner being told that, he never opted to go that route, um, but now here we have in front of us this evening, and we can hopefully finally get a plan on the, uh, record for this property. Again, a lot of history here, there's BZA cases that were involved, primarily with the old use, um, for the accessory building, the changeable copy sign that is still currently standing out there, it was also, uh, if you recall, several years ago, it hasn't been operating for a number of years, but there used to be like a little outdoor farm market that would operate here seasonally, there was, um, that was part of the BZA approval at one point and temporary signage that went with that. But, uh, starting in, uh, after the property was acquired last year, the property owners started with demolition of the old Lawn Center building and removal of trees and prepping the site for the, the development application they have in front of you this evening. Um, as you can see, the proposed building would sit near the southeast corner of the lot, parallel to Big Walnut Road, uh, stands thirty-three feet, measured, uh, to the top of the proposed cupola, as illustrated in the building elevations that were provided. Uh, in terms of traffic and access, um, development appears to have taken into account the, uh, expanded right-of-way that's going to be needed for the new roundabout design at the intersection, uh, access to the site from south old three C highway, as well as the property, uh, the home, uh, would no longer exist. Um, I think there is still a driveway shown there, but I think it would, my understanding of the drawings is that driveway would not only service the home and not service the, um, this application, I'm sure the applicants can speak more to that. Trip generation analysis memorandum was submitted as part of the application, the analysis shows that the traffic impact to this use, for this use is minimal, total AM trips was nine, while the total PM trips was eleven. Um, township staff sent a copy of plans to the engineer's office for the, provide them, pardon me, an opportunity to flag any issues, I did not receive a response from them, but again, uh, based on the drawings I've seen of the roundabout, as part of the township's review of the right-of-way acquisition, this looks pretty accurate to me in terms of what it's going to be, um, I can always sort of ask the engineer's office again as to whether or not this is truly a hundred percent accurate, as to where those lines are supposed to be. Parking, the parking lot situated is just west of the proposed building, contain nineteen spaces, including one accessible space, as well as curb blocks for those spaces. A designated turnaround at the terminus of the parking lot has not been provided, it's not required, um, but since the site exceeds the number of required parking spaces for the development, nineteen as opposed to the twelve that are required by the code, staff recommends the applicant can consider, uh, that the northern end of the parking lot be reconfigured to a design that would allow for motorists to safely turn around at the head and head south if necessary, so they don't have to back all the way down the drive aisle. Um, in terms of pedestrian access, the sidewalk system would run adjacent to the eastern parking row around some of the building perimeter. Some of the drawings don't match, though, in that aspect, so that needs to be sort of clarified, in, in one drawing, it shows it all the way around the building, you can see in this drawing, it's only on three sides of the building, um, so we need that cleaned up and clarified. No sidewalk multi-use paths or trails are proposed by the applicant, nor is any such improvement included in the county's plans for the roundabout, to the best of my understanding anyway. Um, the township is actively pursuing money to construct a trail along the north side of Big Walnut Road from Route Three to south old three C highway. Uh, for context, Big Walnut Road and the associated right-of-way is currently owned and maintained by the township, although all the traffic improvements are typically of this scale, especially because it intersects a county road, that's a, going to be a county constructed project. Two pole-mounted light fixtures would be provided to eliminate the parking lot, one along the western parking row and one along the eastern parking row, uh, the western, southern, and eastern entrances into the building would be flanked by building-mounted light fixtures, again, as we noted in the prior hearing, probably required by the building code. Uh, fixture specifications and a lighting plan have been provided to demonstrate code compliance, i.e. zero-foot candle measurements along the lot line shared with residential properties. Uh, in terms of landscaping, two existing trees on the western end of the site near the septic mound would remain, um, or so that's what it looked like on the drawing, to me at least, twelve additional trees would be planted along the site's western lot line shared with Mulberry Estates. Into signage. Oh, I'm sorry, there was one more note on landscaping, building foundation, uh, shrubs and plantings would be provided adjacent to each building entrance. So, back to signage, two freestanding post and panel signs, each having a face on each side, are proposed for the development, one along Big Walnut Road, um, since moved out of the right-of-way, uh, since this application was submitted, and another along, um, along south old three C highway, each side would be illuminated externally, their heights are eight feet, uh, references to changeable copy sign will need to be removed as this sign does not, from the materials, as this sign does not qualify as a changeable copy, at least not how I was reading the definitions and understanding the proposal. Subsequently, the message area of the sign, including the panels, need to be reduced no more than twenty-five square feet per side of that sign, uh, because it's a post and panel, uh, sign. Uh, the current proposal does not seek to incorporate any sign bonuses allowed under the code, as currently proposed, if the bonus is our claim, the materials will need to be updated to provide proof that the development qualifies for such bonuses. Setback measurements for the proposed sign have not been provided, as such compliance with section eighteen oh four oh seven cannot yet be determined. Staff presumes the existing changeable copy sign on the property will be removed as part of the roundabout project and not replaced, however, this should be clarified in the submission materials. No building-mounted signage appears to be proposed, the applicant will be entitled to certain signage within, uh, permitted within section eighteen oh three of the zoning resolution without having to include it on this plan. Also, such signage does not generally require a zoning permit unless otherwise stated in certain specific instances, um, and this, again, not need to be included in these plan materials. Development text and plan materials will need to be updated to remove references to divergences that have been requested, allowed the sign along Big Walnut Road within the right-of-way. Basically, after I got the plans and I saw that, I, I contacted the applicant, told them that, that was going to be a no-go, even if zoning by some grace allowed it, um, again, township, non-zoning entity of the township, controls Big Walnut Road, and we just don't allow signs in any township right-of-ways anymore. There's, there's some old ones out there that are in there, but anymore, we don't, they're just, it's a maintenance, it's a safety issue, um, it's a liability issue for the township, if someone goes off the road and hits the sign, liable for it, um, and maintenance for cutting grass, you do utility work, the signs get in the way, so that's, that's why we just don't allow the permanent signs in the right-of-way anymore. So they need to clean up the plans and materials to, to reflect the modern, uh, the modified proposal, um, in its entirety. Uh, septic and sanitary, the property is currently on a septic system, would remain so, um, so under this proposal, sanitary sewer is not immediately in the area, for reference, this township building we're sitting in is also on septic system for the same reasons. I believe the septic system, if I know my history correct, was installed a dozen or so years ago to replace an outhouse on the property, uh, the mound is located on the western end of the site, while two tank areas are located immediately north of the proposed building. As far as stormwater and drainage is concerned, stormwater management would be provided via an underground detention basin beneath the proposed parking lot. Uh, brief soils analysis was also provided with the applications, the site, like much of the townships, is made up entirely of Bennington silt loam, which has slow water infiltration and transmission rates, and has very little slope, relatively flat. Letters confirming utility availability have been provided from Delco as well as AEP, a letter from the Natural Gas Company was not included, um, which we usually like to see, as already noted, sanitary sewer is currently not available in this area. Uh, the proposal does not appear to include a dumpster, the applicant should identify in the materials how trash and recycling will be stored and handled on the site. Divergence requests, there are numerous, so bear with me. And they're numerous due to the nature of this site, it's small, um, it's a corner lot, there's a lot going on, uh, we've told everyone over the years, just like a couple other sites we saw on Magstown Road, that for anyone to do anything meaningful on this site was going to probably require numerous divergences, because it just, there's, there's just not a lot of room here to, to do much. So, um, let's jump right into it, again, the list is also longer because it's also subject to the Hoover watershed overlay, which, um, adds some code sections. So divergence number one to section seven oh three oh three A four, requires a hundred and seventy-foot open space buffer along the track's perimeter street frontage, which would be old three C and Big Walnut, the request is to provide a one-foot setback from Big Walnut Road right-of-way. Staff note, this divergence request, including the text and the divergence list, need to also account for the setback from south old three C highway, also why is identified in the text needs to be added to the list of divergence requests for the Olive Branch in the application packet. Uh, the second divergence to section seven oh three oh eight, which requires that the parking lots be located no closer than a hundred and seventy feet from the edge of the contiguous right-of-way, uh, the request is again to provide a one-foot setback from Big Walnut Road, and staff's note about, um, also needing to include the setback from south old three C highway applies here as well, as well as they need to know, or they also need to know whether any of the plantings required by, uh, that sec, section seven oh three oh eight are going to be provided. Um, sec, third divergence is section seven oh three ten, which requires a sidewalk, multi-use path, or pedestrian easement along the parcel's frontage on existing streets, request is to not provide any of the amenities, uh, note, there already is a multi-use path along south old three C highway, as you probably are aware, uh, the county's current plans for the intersection, again, do not contain any pedestrian ways along Big Walnut Road that I could see. Mulberry Estates to the west did provide an easement to the township across their frontage for such an improvement when it was plotted, I've already talked about the township is seeking funding, I'd have to talk to Administrator Wise as to whether or not he thinks, if we get that funding, whether we would just build that trail in the expanded right-of-way or whether or not, um, there'd be an issue, but I would like to think there's going to be enough room in that right-of-way for us to fit the trail in, just like the trail on old three C is in the right-of-way, um, that's already there. Divergence number four to sections twelve oh three oh three A and B, which requires a seventy-five-foot wide green straight strip, uh, between any development of the property and any lot line shared with residential or planned residential zone property, as well as to provide a seventy-five-foot wide visual and mechanical buffer, buffer, excuse me, in such area, the request is to reduce the required setback to five feet, um, staff note, is unclear whether this divergence request applies as none of the proposed development appears to be within five feet of any of the lot lines shared within a lot, shared with a lot within a residential zoning classification. Lot to the north northeast containing the existing home, as I noted, is planned commercial, so even though it's a home, it would not qualify because it's not zone residential or planned residential. Uh, sec, fifth divergence, section twelve oh three dot oh nine C, which requires the parking lot be located no closer than seventy-five feet from the edge of the contiguous, or continuous right-of-way, the request is again to reduce that setback to one foot, which is similar to the request, uh, being made relative to section seven oh three oh eight A that already went through. Divergence six is to section twelve oh eight dot oh one, which requires buildings be separated by at least fifty feet, and that no building be located closer than a hundred feet to a zoning district bounding line, boundary line, or street right-of-way. The request is construct building three feet from Big Walnut Road and thirty-five feet from the south old three C highway right-of-way, um, no, staff note, this request needs to specify the proposed building setback from district bounding lines, as well as the proposed separation between the buildings on and off the site. What were divergence requests, seven, eight, and nine, um, have been rescinded because they were all related to putting the sign in the Big Walnut Road right-of-way. The next divergence request, which I guess would now technically be number seven on the list, um, would be to section nine oh, nineteen oh three dot oh one, which requires that parking aisles accessing ninety-degree parking spaces be twenty-five feet in width, the request is reduce the required width by three feet to twenty-two feet. So those are all the ones that they have requested, now we've got some additional staff for commentary regarding the divergences, uh, the first being a divergence to article seven, section seven oh three oh three B will need to be requested in both the development text as well as on the list they provided, this section requires certain planting ratios within the required buffer along Big Walnut and south old three C highway, the proposed reduction of the required buffer to one foot will make complying with the planting standards seemingly impossible along Big Walnut Road, uh, this divergence is similar and related to the divergence requested for section seven oh three, oh three A four and seven oh three oh eight A, it is also somewhat similar to the request regarding section twelve oh three dot oh nine C. While the number of divergences requested, um, is somewhat similar to, sorry, let me start again, while the number of divergence requested seems relatively large, this figure is slightly deceiving, some of the requests deal with the same general concept or requirement, but are requested separately due to the fact that the same or similar code standards exist in more than one applicable location within the zoning resolution. From a big picture perspective, the current request boiled down to, again, allowing the proposed parking lot to be located closer to both the road frontages and presumably not provide the required plantings along them, that's basically three different code sections deal with that. Two, not providing pedestrian or easements along Big Walnut Road, that's one code section, uh, the request about not allowing the develop, or allowing the development to encroach into residential, planned residential setback, as I noted, that one may not even be needed, there's a clarification there. Again, allowing the building be able, built closer to Big Walnut Road and south old three C highway, while simultaneously reducing zoning district boundary setbacks and the required building separation distances, and the planting issue that I've talked about, again, that's three different code sections speak to all that, and reducing the required parking drive aisle width, so, you know, but if you boil it down into principally speaking what they're really asking for, as currently listed, there's four, maybe possibly five they need, but because again, there's redundancies in the code section, that's what blows it up to the eight or nine that we got to when I was reviewing it. Moving on to staff commentary, commercial utilization of the subject property is generally consistent with the recommendations of the Genoa Township Comprehensive Plan, chapter four of the plan recommends neighborhood-scale commercial office uses on parcels already zone commercial and/or industrial, which this is, however, that recommendation technically only applies to properties serviced by sanitary sewer. So, there's that little bit caveat, however, while this property is not serviced by sanitary sewer, as already noted, it is zoned for commercial use, it has been zoned for commercial use for decades, and planned for commercials zoning slash use since, or planned for that commercials use and zoning since at least the two thousand eight comp plan. Um, furthermore, the comprehensive plan map shows the land use recommendation of the neighborhood scale, of neighborhood-scale commercial plans, so to me, this makes it clear that continued commercial use of the property is envisioned by the township, especially considering it's going to have this huge roundabout and, uh, two, uh, pretty busy roads, uh, adjacent to it. Staff's technical review is attached to this memo, numerous comments, including those pertaining to text cleanup and wordsmithing need to be addressed, however, significant items include, um, additional information regarding the acreage of the site and taking the right-of-way into account, pre and post roundabout needing clarified, um, or provided and clarified, clarification consistency regarding the size of the proposed building, as there was some discrepancy in the numbers throughout the materials, I think it's twenty-four hundred square feet, but there's a couple different figures in the materials, so we need to pick one and go with it. Uh, the intended future use of the existing accessory building, as I said, it's probably storage, but we need to clarify that. Intentions and clarity regarding prior approvals granted by the BZA for the site, are they rescinding them, are they wanting to retain some of them? I guess the, the, the commission doesn't really have the right to take them away from them, we just need to know, do they want to just keep them as part of the record, or do they want them officially rescinded? I really probably don't care either way, because I don't think really they're going to be, if this site gets approved as proposed, um, or somewhat a figuration thereof, I doubt anything that those BZ approvals granted would be even relevant here, but for the sake of the record, we probably should have it just clear one way or the other. There are parking lot design and landscape requirements, uh, for properties within the Hoover watershed overlay district, there's some modifications that are going to be, need to be made, probably to adhere to those. Um, we need clarification regarding the divergence for sidewalks. Figures and calculations used to compute the proposed lot coverage need to be provided to provide, verify accuracy, they told me what the, the end figure was, but I, I want to see the math, I want to see the work to make, verify those calculations. How trash and recycling again will be stored and handled, as I noted, needs to be addressed. The distance of the proposed building from other buildings, as well as the setback of the proposed building from lots within a residential or planned residential zoning district need to be clarified or labeled, so we fully understand how that's all working. Screening of the proposed parking lot from Big Walnut Road, again, that might get rolled into a divergence request. Proof that the Delaware County Public Health District will authorize this development to utilize the existing septic system. Uh, inconsistencies in site layout between the drawings, i.e. the sidewalk around the perimeter of the building issue I discussed, the setbacks to proposed freestanding signs for Big Walnut Road and nearby residential properties, the illumination times of the proposed signs, the message area of the proposed signs being too large, the fate of the existing sign on the property, um, possibly, the, likely needing a divergence to section seven oh three oh three B, clarification of the divergence pertaining to section seven oh three ten, clarification of the divergence pertaining to sections, uh, twelve oh three oh three A and B, rescinding and deleting the divergence is no longer being requested relevant to the signs in the Big Walnut Road right-of-way, providing response to the divergence review standards found in the zoning resolution. Providing response to divergence review standards found in the zoning resolution. So I'm going to just add some additional final commentary here, and then hopefully we can move on with the hearing. The primary reason for setback requirements, in my opinion, from right-of-way lines is to ensure that sufficient room exists should a right-of-way ever need to be expanded to accommodate roads, pedestrian infrastructure drainage, or utilities. The aesthetics of such are generally subjective. As a general matter, modern planners tend to advocate for buildings in particular to be located closer to the road as they enhance the pedestrian experience and can actually assist in traffic calming. Significant portion of this lot's property along Big Walnut Road will be taken as right-of-way for most, if not all, of the aforementioned purposes. While staff cannot say that the road intersection will never need to be expanded again in the future, it seems unlikely that such expansion will be needed after the roundabout is complete, at least not within, you know, any immediate timeframe, hopefully. Furthermore, the distance between the post-construction curb of the Big Walnut, of new Big Walnut Road is not labeled. Staff estimates it to be approximately thirty feet in width. Assuming this is correct, the proposed parking lot building will look like they are set back much further from the road than they actually are, if you compare it to that one-foot setback you're looking at, due to the fact that the right-of-way line is, again, considerable distance away from the paved roadway. I estimated the parking lot being around, looking like visually, it will look like it's about thirty-one feet back from that curb, and the building being approximately thirty-three feet, give or take. Despite the numerous divergence requests, utilization of the current planned commercial zoning designation is, as noted, consistent with the Township's comp plan map, and if nothing else, fair considering the fact that it was a classification seemingly imposed on the property by the township over thirty-five years ago. Furthermore, in my opinion, asking the property owner to rezone would be onerous, as it is an action of the township may have been able to proactively, unilaterally undertake at any time, had the planned designation been previously identified as a concern. Also, if the property was a straight zoning district, any relief to the standards of the zoning resolution would require variances. The legal standard for variances differ from those for divergences, can potentially be more difficult for the applicant to surmount, given the quasi-judicial nature of variances. Also, generally, if this site were to go, historically, when the BZA gets these types of properties, and there's a lot of variances, if there's an opportunity for the BZA to say, we think you need to get a development plan instead, that's probably what they're going to tell them. So if this proposal was a straight zoning district, community business, and had to go to the BZA and ask for half a dozen variances, the BZA is probably going to tell them, you need to rezone this to the planned commercial district, go to the zoning commission, get a development plan, and get divergences for whatever you need. So what I'm trying to say is, I don't want them to get stuck in a position where the zoning commission says, oh, you need to be community business and go to the BZA, and then the BZA tells them, oh, you should be planned commercial and go to the zoning commission, and now you've got two different boards pointing in two different directions, like the scarecrow, and the applicant doesn't know what to do. So to me, utilizing the existing zoning classification, even though it does result in some divergences, makes sense. Again, I've said before, I don't view divergences as a bad word, a bad thing, they're in the plan, the document, for a reason. You know, the code just can't anticipate every scenario, every situation, every geometry of a site. The planned districts were basically invented to allow for flexibility in zoning, that the straight zoning districts and variance process wasn't allowing for. So to me, it makes sense. Staff recommends the township work with the applicant to accommodate as many divergences as it's comfortable doing, can, within reason, obviously, due to the numerous challenges inherent to the site and its surroundings, again, being the size, geometry, the corner lot, right-of-ways, septic system location, especially given that the proposed development is relatively modest in terms of size and impact. Without divergences, development of this property in any kind of reasonable or significant manner would probably be very difficult, if not almost impossible. Leaving the lot underdeveloped would not be good for the community and could potentially create legal problems for the township. Subsequently, there are very few vacant or underutilized, or underutilized, commercial properties, excuse me, left in the township. This is especially important to note, since the township is getting close to reaching build-out. Allowing properties to be redeveloped will encourage reinvestment and will also allow the community to evolve to meet the needs of residents and the market as opposed to stagnating. Once the zoning commission has issued a recommendation, this application would be forwarded to the Board of Trustees for acknowledgement and consideration pursuant to Sections twenty-seven oh six dot oh nine through twenty-seven oh six dot fifteen of the zoning resolution. If the application is approved, it'll also be subject to provisions of twenty-seven oh six dot sixteen through twenty-seven oh six dot nineteen of the zoning resolution. So that concludes my memorandum. I'm not going to go through the technical reviews. There's a lot of items there. Some of it's just cleanup, some of it's more substantive. But my overview I gave during the memorandum presentation, I think, captured what I considered probably the biggest, most important items in terms of compliance and administration. But there are going to be numerous comments in the technical review that I'll talk about, change this word to this word, change this word to this word. Those are more just cleanup items as opposed to compliance or big picture concerns. So scanning here real quick, but with that, Mr. Chairman, I know there's a lot to digest here, a lot to discuss, so I think it's best at this time I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Applicant here. Please come up to the table.
Should I recuse myself?
Yeah.
Hey Chair, I have a perceived conflict of interest, so I'm going to recuse myself for the time being.
Okay. Sound good? What the record showed, Ryan Wester goes to recuse himself for this hearing. You don't get to go home, Ryan. Yeah. If you could string that mic on, number one, and then name and address, and then whoever wants to start us off.
Mindy Cosman, five six one eight Harrow Glen Court, Galena.
Bill Myers, thirteen eight forty-six Allery Road, Sunbury, Ohio.
Our co-brook, two three five five Cross Creek Court, Los Angeles, Ohio.
Kevin Parzic, three 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 Stewart Avenue, Columbus.
Ben Schilling, one twenty-two South Otterbine, Westerville.
Thank you. Just talking.
Okay.
I can introduce myself. I'm Mindy Cosman. I'm a psychiatric nurse practitioner. I currently work downtown at National Youth Advocate Program. I have an office at the South High Street location. I service the entire spectrum. National Youth Advocate Program, despite its name, does service the entire spectrum of lifespan, and I am board certified for that. I also work at Hiddlehouse, which is a residential facility for adolescent males who are juvenile sex offenders or at risk for offending. I am the sole psychiatric provider at that site. This current project, the Olive Branch, will be significantly different from those two avenues that I have. That's primarily a Medicaid population and very much residents of that particular community. Galena is significantly, Westerville is far away from those locations, and so it's not a conflict of interest related to the other services that I provide. This will be a private practice. There will be no insurance accepted. It's all out-of-pocket, private pay, and then out-of-network reimbursement from commercial insurances to those patients directly. So the site will be for myself. There will be five other offices there, generally intended for complementary services, meaning therapists, people who also are providing mental health services slightly different than mine, so that we have an in-house network of providers who can meet different needs, whether it's based on, some are just pediatric use, some are adult. I am known for my pediatric experience, and so I intend to have a large pediatric population for me personally. That said, I can't guarantee that we'll all be mental health services, and they're simply because I do want those spaces rented. And so if someone comes to me from State Farm, and they are going to leave a quiet footprint and be compatible with the other services that are provided in the building, then I'm open to that. But the people that I have interested thus far in three offices that I have, people who want them, those are for therapist offices. I am currently seeing patients already. I opened February the second, and I have an office in the Elevate Building in Westerville, located at the corner of Cleveland Avenue and Polaris Parkway, and so that is where I am currently providing services. When the building is in place, then I will move those patients to the office here. Thank you for inviting me. I'm thrilled to be here. It's an exciting opportunity for my family and I. I live just one point nine miles from here, so this is just bringing my locus of activity close to home.
So the site's a very unique site, right? So we're definitely going to need some help to fit this in there, but I think what we're proposing is a very good benefit to the community and will be a very nice-looking facility, well-constructed. Again, it's a tough, challenging site. I think we've done a pretty good job laying it out where we can keep the existing septic and have access to the roundabout as well. So I know we have some things to clean up and some things to do, but we're looking for feedback so we can give a very good, solid, positive proposal to get this going.
Good.
I know that we've submitted some architectural imagery with Gonzo Man Architecture Interiors, where the architects for the building, one-story building, as was mentioned. The look of the building will be essentially a farmhouse style, gable roof, standing seam metal roofing, operable windows, generally compatible with very similar building styles featured in this area. It's a pretty small footprint, six offices, a waiting room, comes some bathrooms, as mentioned before, so pretty straightforward structure.
Oh, I'm with American Structure Point, civil site engineer. I just wanted to note the septic system is existing. There are some separation requirements, environmental separation requirements with that, so that's also what led to the site plan that is seen here. Also want to note that we are the design engineer for the roundabout, so that is the latest plan of roundabout and should be pretty accurate. I'm not the project manager for that project in particular, but it is within our firm, so that's all we got.
Any comments or questions from the technical or the staff memo to discuss now before we start asking you questions?
I would say, in terms of signage, that's one thing in my court. We're planning to revise some updated calculations for allowable area and also clarify the setbacks. So we're happy to work with staff or provide further comment. They'll be, as noted in the drawing, fairly close to the new right-of-way line, but just that's due to the lack of space on the site. So I think we've understood the technical memo and the commentary, and we generally agree with it, and we'll make some adjustments as noted.
And I'll just note that we have reached out to both the county engineer's office and the health department to discuss the septic system and its use for the, for the future use, and then also to discuss the proposed access in conjunction with roundabout.
I'm Mark with Kail Builders. Just also, we've tried to, I mean, I know there's some cleanup we need to do, Joe. I think did a great job of understanding the challenges we're dealing with and what we're trying to do to make it, you know, be good neighbors and be good stewards of that lot, but understanding that you almost couldn't build anything there if you didn't ask for some divergences here to make this work. But I think it's something everybody will be proud of. We also went and met with the health department, and I feel good about the meeting and with what Structure Point did about them approving what that is or mitigating what's there. The use should be much smaller than probably what a residential use is. It's too half-mast, just to service, you know, patients that may or may not need it, very similar probably to, but even smaller than what the township office would be. We feel it to be very complimentary, and we're working to try to, there's a lot of moving parts on this, and we're doing our best to comply with as few divergences as we can, but still, you know, make it doable.
Say something about the garbage?
As far as the garbage, so we just plan to have a, one single trash can, one recycling bin. There will not be a dumpster there. I anticipate that we'll have less garbage there than my family of four. I, for one, am paperless, and so all of my documentation is electronic. Keep in mind, it's a psychiatric practice, and so this isn't a medical practice where there's table paper to change in. And so unless someone comes in with a Starbucks cup that they need to throw away while they're in my office, I'm not generating appreciable garbage, so that should be a negligible issue. And to clarify the intended structure for the building that remains, that's correct, it will be storage. We'll have a lawnmower in there. We'll be, we intend to provide the lawn service that is there. We intend to provide the cleaning service that's there. This is, my husband and I investing in this. We have adolescent children, and so this will be a family project.
Okay. Anything else? All right, we'll move on to public comment. Name, address. Rick, you need to be sworn in, since you didn't raise your hand last time. So do you swear to tell the truth? Swear to tell the truth, only the truth is what you've got.
Yes, I do.
Yeah, thank you. All right, go, Rick.
Yes. Rick Wheeling in, ninety-five hundred Britton Woods Drive. Looking at your development here, whatever, you've got an attic, they have an attic up above, it looks like, but it doesn't show any steps going up to it on their floor plan as far as on the drawings. Plus, I wanted to bring up an issue, I think it's section nineteen oh five of your code, as far as loading zones. And I wanted to see if this is required for this type of a parcel, that it has to have a loading zone and stuff on it because of the classification that it's in. And my biggest issue sometimes with these commercial areas and these areas is just the septic stuff. I'd like to see if they're going to be able to put this stuff in to have, you know, sanitary sewers and stuff available for them. You know, you're putting a big investment in here, it's going to be in there for years and years down the road. I don't know what's going on with that development that's just right around the corner that they just put in. If they're going to be able to tie into sanitary sewer for that development at all or not, but if they are, it'd be wise for these guys to tie into it also. That would free up a lot of your divergences and stuff on that lot if they could, because they're going to be tied into a lot of land with that existing septic system, plus additional septic systems. They're going to find out, they're going to need another leach bed for future use on that property if they try to maintain that existing one. So those are some of my issues I saw tonight. Thanks.
I would be sworn in. Do you swear to tell the truth, only the truth is what you've got?
Yes.
Thank you. Name and address.
Mark Stelzer, seven seven three one, Big Walnut Road. I do have a concern regarding the site itself. I mean, it's been a number of things forever, you know, a grocery store at one time, you know, then, but most recently with the lawnmower repair shop. I don't have any idea what was done with waste oil. You know, is there any EPA issues there? Is there any underground, you know, storage for waste, waste oils, or were they just dumping it in the ground? I don't know how they had it removed, if that's been checked out. You know, the other concern I have, again, is, would be septic, you know, yes, I believe, you know, there probably was an existing septic system. I have to believe it's so old, it's probably not very functional. You know, I would think it would have to be replaced, and I would guess Delaware County Health Department would make some of those determinations. I don't know how they, how Delaware County looks at septic for a commercial building, which usually would not be on septic. You know, residential, it used to be, for every bedroom, you had to have so many gallons of, you know, storage capacity. I don't know how they do that with office space, but, you know, that would need to be looked at. I don't know where on the site you would have enough room for a leak system. So concern would just be how, you know, what's going into the ground. I haven't gone through all the drawings or anything, but just like looking at that site plan, does the parking area, would there be sufficient handicap access, parking spots, access into the building, things like that. And then probably the last comment. Yeah, I know we're looking at this peanut-shaped roundabout, which is going to come in the next couple of years. You know, there's been talk for years about, you know, putting this exit off seventy-one You know, there's been talk for years about, you know, putting this exit off 71 to Big Walnut Road, if that ever happens, Big Walnut Road would probably get widened, you know, what's the potential for that roundabout becoming a two-lane roundabout? What would that do to that site? You know, I don't know if that's something that needs to be taken into account or not. That's my comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else? Going once, going twice? All right, public comment's closed. Anything you just heard, respond or comment or question?
That neighborhood is all septic as well. It's back there.
Yeah.
Yeah, this building is septic.
Yeah, the closest sewer that I'm aware of isn't, to the north is Vinmar Farms, to the south, it's probably Covington Meadows, to the east, there's probably nothing until you get to Medallion, and to the west, it's probably Route 3, like the fire, I'm not even sure the fire station's unsanitary, I don't know that, but it's far away in every direction. Trust me, if that neighborhood had put sewer in, us here at the building would have loved it because we would have tapped in. We've thought about trying to extend a line to tap in, but it's just not been feasible even for us.
Okay. Let me get this on these other ones.
If I could comment on a couple of the things. So, the gentleman mentioned sanitary extensions regarding the capacity of the septic, that's something that we're working with the health department on, so we're gonna work with actually the original designer of that septic system. We have a relationship with him and we've already reached out to him about this particular system, so we just need to provide updated calculations to the health department. As Mindy noted, though, the use is anticipated to be equivalent, if not less than a residential use.
What was the age of it?
How old was it?
Twelve.
Sorry?
Twelve.
Yeah, it was, the site has been there a long time, but for many decades, it was just an outhouse without any septic system, literally just an old, on-the-ground outhouse. And so when they put that septic system in many years ago, twelve years ago, it was a great improvement.
Sure. Very good. We have provided a handicap parking space that will be van accessible, so there's an eight-foot aisle for van accessibility. As far as the roundabout design, with this being a county project, this is looking, you know, twenty, maybe even fifty years in advance. So, the county is working with ODOT, they're working with all of the municipalities in the area and all the governing bodies to project what the traffic flow is gonna be like in these areas, so if that were to happen, it would be fifty-plus years in the future, so, wanted to note that.
Yeah.
Small note on attic access, we will provide some amount of attic access per building code, whether it's a ship's ladder, a temporary ladder, or even a stair, it would, the space is not habitable, so there's many options for providing that, that internal access only.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, questions, comments?
You want me to start?
Sure.
So, first of all, I want to say that I appreciate all the work you put in this documentation, great plans, I really appreciate that, and I think that the use is fitting for this location. However, I calculated fifteen or nine, depending on how you counted, divergences, that's not including the divergences from the sign and also not the 703.10 that I took out, that's still a lot, and, because we often like, we are often here talking that three divergences is a lot for development and you're asking for a lot, and I understand the site has its difficulties, but, like, I kind of drew out what, like, the maximum kind of parameters that you kind of need to abide by, I don't know if Paul can show this? So, I put the points on there to show, like, one-seventy-foot common open space and/or improved common open space, but first, I'll be provided along the, any attractive parameter street frontage measured from the right-of-way line, I mean, that's basically there, that's basically everything, that's the biggest ask that Hoover overlay district asks us, so you could only, according to Hoover overlay, you can build there in that top corner, and then according to the planned commercial district, you can basically build there. And even if I, like, I made a scenario where we give like a 25% leniency, and even then, like, because it needs to be where the overlap happens, that's like here, and it still moves to the back, and I just, just for the sake of it, I was, I wondered, like, what would it be if you do rezone to PCD, because PCD doesn't have the whole Hoover watershed overlay, and you don't have to have, you don't have to take care of that problem, so if you go to, do the, if you would rezone to commercial business district, you still cannot do anything because of this last one. Your building shall be closer than a hundred feet from a residential plant's district boundary line, which is basically here where the residential district is, but since this is kind of like, there is like a similar kind of offset with 1107, 06, and 07, there's a minimum side and rear yard setback from there, so, I mean, if you could ask for a divergence, I don't know if Paul, if you can move to the next one, then, like, you could still build here, but anyhow, like, it always pulls your building back where you can build, so it's like, for me, it's kind of like, I mean, it's for me hard when you come ask for a building in the front of this lot, to me, because your setbacks from a hundred feet go to one foot, it's very extreme to me, and I'm just thinking, like, we, a lot of projects come in front of our, in front of our desk, and we, we're always like, oh, we'd rather have it down to a few divergences, okay? And I understand a lot, don't get me wrong, but, like, I'd rather see the building more backwards, more, either you rezone to a commercial business district or you plan it more like a commercial business district as a plant, as a plant, as a plant's commercial district, but that's kind of where your building should be, in my opinion, that's just my take on it. I just think it's way too many, too many divergences. I mean, I can talk about all the other things, I have a whole list that I can go over with about all the little things, but in my opinion, it should be a little bit rethought.
Where is the existing septic? Where's the area? Where's the field?
I can't see it here.
That's, okay. Yeah, I just didn't see it really labeled, I guess it's just an icon or something. Okay. Well, an example of Sebastian's question would be, you know, one of the divergences to reduce the aisle width from 25 to 22, is that still one of the active ones?
Mm-hmm.
So, what is the genesis for reducing the aisle width from 25 to 22?
Yeah, it's both because of the offsets that are required from the septic tanks and the septic mountain that's on the west side, so there's pavement setbacks that we have to adhere to because of those septic systems.
But, isn't it less if you would draw the parking spaces different under a different angle? Well, yeah, that you probably cannot get at, well, except if you have something at the end, we were talking, where Joe was talking about, if you get rid of some of them and have some kind of turnaround at the end. Anyway, for me, it's still like, I can go in all these details because I have that too, but my biggest question is, should the building be in front?
I have a question to address, one of the comments about the state of the site, has a phase-one environmental assessment been performed? Did we have a report?
I believe there's documentation that all of that was already remediated, because we made sure of that before we purchased the property, that was, we have documentation of that.
That would be something I would want to include in this, to address the condition of the site, given it has a septic tank and its former life.
Then also, like, sometimes you use measurements from the old, from the old right-of-way lines, and sometimes you knew, you use it from the new right-of-way lines, it's very inconsistent. Like, you say your acreage is 1.09, if you get the new right-of-way line, your acreage is 0.7, like, that's the actual acreage after the new right-of-way line. Same thing with your, like, I mean, your calculation for, is it called, the asphalt thing, like, how much, how much building and asphalt you can have, the percentage, like, that's incorrect because you also calculated that with the old right-of-way line. I mean, for me, it's like, some things you do with that, like, because I also looked for the frontage, and the frontage was correct, was actually measured correctly from the new right-of-way line, which has like, which has to do with your signage, but...
Yeah, I guess we, it was just the timing of getting the right-of-way plans incorporated into the submittal, the calculations weren't updated, so you're right about the 0.7, the lot coverage is, I believe, 35% instead of the 0.7.
I think I gave 38, I guess. I mean, which is, which is okay, according to our zoning documents, not that, but it needs to be correct in the documents.
Sure.
Sebastian? So, perhaps, to start a conversation here about where the building should be located and why, Sebastian did these nice drawings talking about the setbacks and those requirements for the different overlay districts, seems to me, a lot of the restrictions of the site are actually the septic and having distances from the septic field and that, so it might be advantageous to have a drawing that documents that, like, here's the existing field and the existing tanks, and because of those locations, we really can also only build over here, which may or may not be why the building is located at the corner, so that's one way that maybe Sebastian could be convinced, I'm not sure. Another way is, I don't know, could we redo the septic field and put it somewhere else if that is the constraining factor for the site?
Well, if you were to do that, it's kind of like, where do you put it? So, the best location, I mean, I would assume that the township wouldn't want it, like, at the corner of the intersection, so, back in the northwest corner, which is actually the only buildable area really, would be the ideal location for that. So, with it being on the west side, with the septic tank being behind the building, we just feel that that kind of conceals that and promotes the building as well.
There's another issue that you gave me.
Yeah, sir, can you come up to the microphone and say who you are, please?
Ron Cosman.
And imagine you're with them, so, yeah, that's why I'm letting you do this.
Another issue is that the, behind the building, when you build mound systems and stuff like that, you can't build it on something that's been disturbed, and there's a building that was removed there, so that land is not usable for anything, basically where the mound system is, the only place you can put it, my thinking.
And you'd be pushing it closer to those homes that are eventually gonna be built up there.
So, perhaps, making that argument would help your case for all these divergences. So, look, we get it, the site's weird, can't really build on it, we've even shown that, but making the case that these existing conditions are also causing us to do it here, which is why we're requesting these divergences, I think that might be helpful?
In a past submission, not you guys, but other people, very similar to what Sebastian did, they drew out where some of the things could be, where the boundary lines are, what are the requirements, especially around that, that would help identify why it has to go where it is, which would explain some of the divergent requests, especially one foot off of a line of a setback, so, I would suggest that. The other thing is just the nomoral distances, I know Joe did a nice calculation and said, really, we're probably 30 to 31 feet back based on what the new right-of-way line is, it doesn't show it anywhere on here, so just, all of a sudden, we're seeing one foot setback, like, hey, wait a second, that's, that's a huge divergence from 170 to 1, but you're not taking into account that there's actually a 30-foot space that's in there.
Yeah, visually, I mean, it is a one foot, it is a one foot setback, but it's not visually gonna look like a one foot setback.
Legally, it's a one foot setback. And all of a sudden, now we're looking at, it's like, eh, okay, it's actually decently far back, but what is that distance? We can't, we don't know where you are from a curb line, like, granted, you didn't have maybe all the plans to begin with, we didn't have the full acreage calculation of what was being removed, all that stuff is gonna be, we need to look at it, and that would help us understand this a little bit better.
And another thing I probably forgot to mention in my report, I'm sorry for button in, is, you know, the PCD regulations, if you recall, the minimum acreage size, if we were starting fresh slate, is 20 acres for PCD, so we're trying to apply design standards for a 20-acre-plus site onto a site that's less than an acre after the right-of-way take, so, again, just putting that information out there for consideration.
What about the egress and, egress and here, so, I see like a double aisle here, is that what, how it's gonna be designed, since you, you know that?
That is the current way out.
So, is there gonna be easement on your, on your lot to allow these people to be able to use this? Because there's nothing drawn out right now, so, I mean, right now, it's grass, I'm assuming, but, well, I know, but yeah, they're not gonna come here and then make this loop, there's gonna be or something, I'm assuming?
There is existing.
Come to the table.
Pull the chair up.
There is existing shared driveway right there, that is what that's reflecting, if you see, if you saw the overhead picture, you will see literally gravel going.
You know, I understand that, but still, like, right now, how it's been drawn, it's like, it's like, to me, it looks like it's gonna be grass, so where's that driveway gonna be? I mean, you probably need to draw it out where it's gonna be.
I, yeah.
And also, is that gonna count towards your paved area, because, I mean, that's, I'm guessing that's not gonna be grass anymore then, so...
I had no plans.
Yeah, so, I mean, what we've submitted shows where we're paving.
Well, I understand it, but these people cannot get out of their driveway with that new design.
So, I, okay, okay, I'm just, that was just mine. So, I think what Sebastian's trying to say is, he want, if that gravel is staying on the site, it needs to be shown on the drawing, and it needs to be taken into account in your impervious calculations.
You're right.
That's, that's what, he's not arguing the design, the design out in the right-of-way section, he's saying, there's gonna be gravel here, a driveway, that you're not showing on your drawing, that you need to show, and label as existing gravel to remain.
The way that the county has currently designed that intersection, that access point is a right-in, right-out, so, you're correct, that if that stays as a right-in, right-out, there would need to be additional pavement in order to actually get that person to be able to make a right-hand turn. We still need to coordinate that access point in particular with the county, because at the time that the plans were put together and this design was created, that shared access drive with the gravel was still in place.
Yeah.
Okay.
In our code, I mean, we, let me look which one it is here. So, we always, I know in our code, in the plans, commercial district, it kind of requires, because the other, the other lot is also zoned that way, that it actually wants just one way of egress, now there's already gotta be two ways of egress for this, for these, both of these, because now there is one on Big Walnut Road and immediately one gonna be at, I mean, I understand that it's for the house right now, but, like, the code strives to only get one and connect them both.
Well, the code is saying that as opposed, if they were building something brand-new, that, I don't look at the code as a way of saying, well, it's this, now you gotta revert it, you gotta modify the site to meet the code, it's an existing grandfather condition to me that we would have to honor, especially because the county's dictating how this access is gonna work on this roundabout, and they have to maintain access probably for that house, so, and this office wouldn't be using that access point onto South Old 3C Highway, so I get what's being said here, but again, this is such a unique property and there's so many factors beyond their control here, I, anyone who comes in to develop the site is gonna be facing these same challenges, and honestly, if you can't do this, I mean, you're looking, they don't build photo huts anymore, so we're not gonna get one of those little small photo huts, but that's all, I mean, really, that's all you can fit on here. I mean, if you're talking about all the zoning and not putting in the parking and trying to restrict the access, so, I'm not trying to sell the development, but I do want to make sure the township, we're cognizant of, you know, we have to be a little fair to the challenges and understand that, you know, if we start levying codes to the point where they can't develop the site nor anyone can develop the site, that's gonna be a huge problem for us because it could qualify as a takings, and we don't wanna go down that road, so, I think we're gonna have to ask ourselves, okay, well, if it wasn't this, what's it gonna be, and, you know? So, I guess I just am cautioning the commission to make sure that we're recognizing that fact that there are complications here and there could be legality, things that get involved if we're not careful.
Yeah, Joe, I appreciate that comment, and I think we all understand, you know, but... Yeah, Joe, I appreciate that comment, and I think we all understand, you know, based on the drawings, that the site is unbuildable in accordance with the ordinance, and that divergences would be, need to be requested for anything to get built. I think having that narrative, we talked a lot about the septic today, how that has put some constraints on the site in addition to the divergences. And I think having that narrative in the development tax helps justify these decisions and makes the commission's decision to maybe grant some of these divergences, um, justified.
And it helps paint the uniqueness of the site, so someone can't come in and say, well, me too, later down the road on a different property.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think in addition to, by way of explanation for the historical record, I think it would be helpful to show what are the property, what are the legal boundary lines now versus what will they be after the county or, oh, comes in and, and does all of their right of way work? So that, I, I mean, so I forget who mentioned it, I mean, there, there's no delineation that you're losing thirty feet off the south end of your property to the county. I think that would also be helpful, um, to show that another, besides the septic system. Here, you've got a perfect storm of things happening here. Number one, you're on septic and there's no sanitary anywhere near close by. And number two, you've got the county coming in and basically taking a significant chunk of your ground for this.
Not roundabout.
Thank you, roundabout, I couldn't think of the word. From my perspective, this is a vast improvement over what was there, and I guess I would caution the commission. You know, somebody could have come in and bought this and left what was sitting there and threw a can of paint on it, and we'd still have a pig with some lipstick on it.
That was the intent by three prior users who I issued change of use permits to that never actually established.
So from my perspective, I, I, I agree that, you know, this, there's a boatload of divergences here, but this is probably, I would go out on a limb and say probably the worst chunk of ground in Genoa Township to try and build something on.
Congratulations.
I mean, certainly, certainly in the time that I've been on this commission in the last five, whatever, five or six years, this, this is the most difficult piece of ground to build on, I think, that we've encountered. But that being said, I think it's an improvement. I think it is a use that is the least impactful on the neighbors because it, it's office space. I mean, and it's, it's, um, it makes sense for where it's at and what's in this area. I think as Joe's elicited, there, there's some issues that need to be hammered out and pointed out, but, um, I think I can get on board with it. I, I mean, I don't know, this is probably a conversation between Mr. Wise and the property owners, I mean, i- if, if we're looking at sidewalks down the, in the future, I don't, that's probably a discussion to have with the Board of Trustees or Mr. Wise, but that certainly makes sense. I mean, but that we can't condition zoning on that, but something to think about.
Well, but we do have the path requirement in Nova Legislature.
That is true.
We already made that pretty clear, that that's, that's a requirement.
Yeah. And Lord knows, we got a big enough right of way to put in hell another roadway. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, so the setbacks, I think, the comments we talked about earlier, let's find out what the buildable number is, where are the boundary lines, what's, what's real? Where's the taking, not the taking, but I mean, at least the reduction in, in lot, uh, the acreage piece, the percent coverage, you already mentioned it earlier, so I'm looking forward to seeing what that looks like. The sign definitely changeable copy versus the whole size wise, we need to look at that, you already mentioned you're going to do it. Path allowance, again, that's seven oh three ten. We definitely need to see what that looks like. Uh, accessory structure, you said, is just going to be storage.
Storage and maintenance.
Storage and maintenance. A heck of a storage and maintenance facility with a HVAC system on it. That's nice, great. Trash you mentioned already, uh, twelve oh three oh one, there's no response in the text. So just please make sure you were getting a response in there on that one. Distances on the drawing, so all those things need to do. Joe already made the comment about the drawings that look different, so making sure we're using the same overhead of the building and the, and the structure. Septic you already did. The sign, other piece on the sign is you have uplights, but there was only one bush sown on the side. Just make sure from a code perspective, you're not allowed to see any lights at all, so if you're going to do uplight, you've got to have it blocked. So you can't be driving down the road and seeing the, the light itself, so just keep that in mind, um, or go to downlights, kind of thing. Other than that, there's a long laundry list of stuff that we need to work with Joe on and appreciate you, you all talking about it and what, what you're trying to do, so. I imagine you're asking for a continuance this evening?
Okay.
Do we have dates on?
Revised materials, unless the commission wishes to change the date, would be May twentieth. Uh, it's basically a week from today, um, for, I believe the meeting was June tenth.
Right, so that, that was going to be my question is.
Lot to get done in a short period of time. With that deadline, again, we are holding true to the deadlines at this point, after what's happened in the last six months, so. You're good for the next meeting, you're going to have it done.
Okay.
Any other questions for us, comments?
You want to help?
I have enough on my plate, thank you.
I would say one thing, on the, if you tried to push this building way north, there's a lot of, I mean, we're going, you could end up asking for a lot of divergences too. And you'd be moving back closer to the residential area that we're trying to screen and
Yep.
give a separation to, in my opinion.
I mean, what we don't want to do is be what was there and be right next to the road. You've got some road movement that's going to happen, all of a sudden, now there's a building, now you've got a hazard to driving or sightlines or other issues. Okay, we don't want to do that. At the same point, we need to protect what is around, especially from a residential perspective, which is why those, all those distances are in there from a setback perspective. Again, a very unique site, um, and if the limitations really are in the septic and where that can go, then let's, let's show that. Show, show on the driveway why it needs to go from twenty-five to twenty-two, you know, and actually put twenty-two in the drawing for us. We can read it, it's better, sometimes it's easier to look at it too.
Feel free to reach out to me with any questions, or even if you want to have a meeting, sit down, that's. Usually what I do is we sit down and we go through the comments and I can answer questions, you know, talk about expectations of what I'm looking to see for all that stuff.
Great job.
Anything else before we make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would move to continue the public hearing for the subject Final Development Plan. Application known as Olive Branch Offices, zoning commission case number twenty twenty-four dash zero three until June tenth at seven PM in the Genoa Township Hall. Additional revised materials will be due to the Genoa Township Development and Zoning Department by May twentieth, uh, twenty twenty-four at four PM.
I second that motion.
Discussion. Roll.
Roll call, Mr. Berner.
Yes.
Mr. Tysman.
Yes.
Mr. Welch. Mr. Leff.
Yes, motion passes for continuance, that ends this at eight fifty-six PM. Thank you very much, we'll see you next month.
Paul, can you go get Ryan, please? Does anybody need a recess?
Yeah, if I'm in a recess.
Sorry.
Joe, I got already one.
Oh, you're already done?
Yeah. It's probably for, yeah.
You don't want to?
Heavy.
Turning from recess, time is now nine oh one P M. It is nine oh one P M. Does anybody wanna go through zoning resolution? Do we need to talk about this stuff first or do you want? What was that? You said you wanted to expand on something? Is that, okay. Thoughts on Z R and if we're gonna do at least a chapter or not?
Are we, I mean, sure.
I wouldn't be opposed to punning this to next month, but so I'll jump on the grenade and throw that out there. But.
So next month you'll have the Northgate project, which I just passed out, and the continued olive branch hearing. I mean, we were, what, we, the last one was sixteen through twenty, we made it through sixteen, so we had seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
No, seventeen we did already.
Yeah, we got through seventeen.
Eighteen and twenty we said for the, like, I mean, I'm just, like, me personally, I don't have a lot in there, so, I mean, I don't know if other people have a lot.
There wasn't as much changes in signs.
No, I have one thing in nineteen, that was it.
All right. Let's go fast, thirty minutes, we're out. Yes, sir.
So we're starting on eighteen?
Yes.
What page is that? It's like three hundred or something?
I just had a quick question about eighteen oh two oh five.
Three oh seven.
Three oh seven.
Where are we?
Page three oh seven.
I'm getting to the page number. He's looking at the PDF.
Yeah.
Which one?
Just, and I just kinda wanna clarify, Joe, what does mean by, and, the maximum projection distance from a building to any other?
Which number are we on?
Um, N. It's page eighteen four technically.
Yep, I'm with you, I got it. So eighteen oh two, what? Oh, five dot N.
Dot N, got it, got it.
Does that just mean that the sign can come out four feet measured from the wall, is that what it means?
Yeah, imagine like a blade sign sticking perpendicular out, or, you know.
Okay, yeah.
The sign for like the Blue Santa Cantina in Uptown projects out from that building.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
So I did have a, an issue in general with signs, 'cause we, where I live, there's a lot of people who start mounting signs on telephone poles, and they're building them in there. Uh, what can the sign section say about that?
You're not supposed to do it.
Well, I know, but is there anything in it?
Yeah, there is. I think we have. There's a whole laundry list of stuff you can attach them to. Plus, the utility companies don't like that either. Oh, I know that, it's in here, I promise, I just can't find the section on the spot, of course. Aha, it's in sub item H of that same section. Signs shall not be posted, attached, or otherwise applied to trees, vegetation, rocks, traffic control signs, bus shelters, utility poles, benches, streetlights, trash receptacles, newspaper vending machines, or boxes, or any other unapproved supporting structure unless otherwise permitted by this resolution. So, yeah, you're already not supposed to do that, but of course, that doesn't mean people.
We can do about it.
Not to prevent it necessarily, sign enforcement is very reactionary usually. Most people aren't asking us whether they can do that, they just do it. Um, but yeah. We, if we can get them off, we will pull them off.
Okay.
Sometimes they're fixed on there pretty good.
That was all for signs for me.
So we're at eighteen, anybody else on eighteen?
Yeah, I got one on the signs, it, it, talk, I'm a little bit behind here, so I'm at eighteen oh two oh five G.
Mm-hmm.
Two, just a question about the white interior light, says internal illumination of a sign shall be permitted by white interior light. What, what does that mean exactly? Does that mean, like, if I have a exterior to it that's maybe red or green, it's a white light inside, but when you look at it from outside, it could be white or green?
Yeah. Yeah, so obviously from the outside, it's gonna look like whatever color it's gonna look like, but the white, lighting behind it should generally be white.
That's all I got.
Anything else for eighteen? We went through this thing in detail, I mean, was it four years ago? When we had the redo. Yeah, did you guys see the stuff I was changing in eighteen oh six that's in this copy, right?
Yes.
Okay.
All the chart?
Yes, I wanna make sure you were all working off the copy that had that.
Are we into nineteen?
Nineteen.
Nineteen oh two oh two.
Okay.
Why is a parking plan not required for duplexes, manufactured homes, mobile homes, road dwellings, residential care facilities, and family dwellings, single family? Well, the last one, I understand. Why not for the rest? Why, why is there no legal approval necessary? That's basically the question.
'Cause those are, 'cause they're residential, we wouldn't.
But even for like a road dwellings?
Well, I guess my thought also was that most of those plans, those are gonna be part of development plans, like, we're not gonna see a standalone, zoning permit application for a duplex complex, 'cause they're only allowed in the planned districts.
Okay, yeah, I see, okay.
So, that, that's the, that's the theory, is that we will have addressed parking during the zoning commission stage of it. Or residential care, care facilities for five or less individuals, I have to treat them as single-family homes anyway, under Ohio law, for someone understanding.
Anyone else? I have nineteen oh four oh nine.
Nineteen oh four oh two A, minimum number of parking spaces.
A, yeah.
This is not, again, similar thing here, we're not talking about the planned community, it's a standalone, is that what? This is for anything regardless, so, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to simplify the parking as much as I can, you know, some communities are going away from even parking minimums at all and actually setting parking maximums, 'cause you get a lot of large, very underutilized parking lots, it's gotten a lot better over the years, 'cause um, people don't wanna do that anymore, nor see it, nor provide stormwater management for it, it's ugly. Um, but I mean, we saw that with Kroger, Kroger had that huge parking lot, and they eventually decided to put that outbuilding in there, and you know, you have to park further away from Kroger sometimes? Yeah, but is that site absent of maybe like day before Christmas or Thanksgiving overflowing? No, so, what I was trying to do here, simplify it, not have to have a standard for all of those uses we have in Article Five, and trying to come up with sort of a more generalized standard, understanding there are still certain si- uses and situations, because they don't have a lot of indoor areas, so you could have like this big sports entertainment complex, and the only building could be a little small concession stand on it, right? Well, if you do, if it's a three hundred fifty square foot concession stand, you have one parking space technically required by the code, which is why I'm trying to account for all those different uses that would still generate, um, traffic.
Right, so in nineteen oh four oh two A,
Mm-hmm.
One, single-family dwellings, including vacation rentals, two parking spaces per dwelling shall be provided. Does that include garage requirement, or is it two parking spaces external?
We've usually counted garages.
Counted garage, okay, so if we go back to a couple hearings that we've had, where we've talked about driveway distances and where there's parking, we said there needed to be at least room for two cars, and then what we were gonna do from a sidewalk perspective. So does that mean we need to account for four here, instead of two?
I think two is just the bare minimum we do, knowing that almost everyone's gonna do four, 'cause almost everyone's gonna want some sort of driveway.
Well, but why don't we say four? Don't we need to say four then? Or do we say two external of garage?
Trying to think of a situation where, where that could pose an issue.
If we've got sidewalks.
'Cause we don't wanna sidewalk underaction, we wanted to make sure that we kept as many cars out of the street as possible, which is what we've tried to do on. I guess I'm trying to think if you had like a plan with alley access garage, um, units, sometimes those back right out onto the alleys, there is really no driveway, there's just alleys. Unlikely to occur here probably, but it is, that is a design situation where you wouldn't have a, a full-length, traditional driveway.
Well, you have it in the, you have it here in the township.
Yeah, I guess we do have.
In my neighborhood, like, the corner of Maxtown and.
I'm talking about alley access, though, like.
How about, it's, that's their, they have the frontage of the roof, the garage access is on that alleyway.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know what you're saying now, yeah, I get it, I get it.
So we do have that issue?
Mm-hmm, yep.
So, I mean, is this, do we need to, do we need to change this section, and the reason I ask that is, we're essentially built out commercially, I don't foresee a vast, open asphalt parking lot coming into existence in the township. Do, do we need to change this section?
I would probably recommend it just from a redevelopment standpoint. Um, also, if someone does wanna come in and, let's say, Home Depot decides we don't need all this parking lot either for whatever reason, and they wanted to do something, the old parking code may say, oh, you still have to have all these spaces, but maybe the new parking code provides some leniency, so, that's the thought process here, and again, I, what I really didn't like in this was the uses we were listing in the parking section didn't match the uses that were in Article Four and Article Five, and the u- we weren't using the same terms, the same breakdown, which I don't know why we would, or, why we would not be, so, instead of listing however many uses I came up with for Article Five, I thought maybe we'll just do one generalized standards and call out these outliers, um, situations, should they ever occur.
So let me ask this question then, I mean, we talk about minimum number of parking spaces based on square feet of floor area.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that's one standard, but then the building code, let's say you do have a commercial development, somebody wants to come and build, uh, an assembly space.
Mm-hmm.
You could have an occupancy load of a thousand people.
Mm-hmm.
But yet, based on this number, or this ratio, or you may not have enough parking spaces for what the building code allows in terms of the occupancy.
Well, yeah, obviously, if their building code's gonna require them to do more, they're gonna have to do more at zoning, because they know they're never gonna get the building permit if they don't provide that, so, to me, it's sort of a self-regulating issue, I guess, to a degree. Now, they would need to know what the building code standard is at the time of zoning. I would think if you're building an arena, you probably have people on board who know that kind of stuff, I thought I had some sort of provision in here where, I know I talked about a parking study, but maybe I, maybe I'm thinking about a different section. I think, you know what, maybe that's covered in seventeen, let me go back and look real quick. On your arena example, anyway, that obviously doesn't speak to every use. But maybe that's like a standard, if there are certain uses you're worried about with that, you know, in the conditional use standard, you put some sort of language in there that would trump the parking standard and say, yeah, but in this situation, because of this use, um.
So then why should we have a maximum number of parking spaces permitted?
Again, 'cause the planning field is trying to push towards maximum spaces to prevent people from needlessly overparking and creating fields of asphalt. And again, a lot of it's with redevelopment in line, do we have a lot of vacant land left, you know, do we have a track large enough for a, under current commercial zoning, for a greenfield constructed, you know, big box store? No, but I just always try to think about what could possibly happen, even, you know, if it seems unlikely right now. So, it's just trying to modernize the parking code and clean up, you know, how we go about doing that, sure, we can, you know, we can play with that, but I, I do think the code section as is needs to be changed somehow. Now, if we're saying this isn't the way to do it, you know, okay, we can, we can, um, look at making revisions, that's obviously fine. But I, I think as it's written now, it doesn't really function very well. And I don't like having standards, like, the ones based on, like, we talked about employees tonight, like, they say they have three employees, I'm, I'm not going in and checking in who, how many employees are working any single shift at that brewery.
Design some of these. I have a different, oh, yeah, I'm, I'm for the rewrite.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I am, I'm, mine was really more the residential piece, if we required more than just the garage, because we run into that, so. I mean, we can clarify, if you wanna put that in there, I mean, we can do that, just know we're now stipulating a certain house design type, because now everyone's gonna have to have a, at least twenty-foot long driveway when they do that.
I wasn't there during that discussion, so I don't know the background of why, um, you're suggesting that with revision, like, what, what that case was and why it came up. It seems to me if there's a garage parking that would satisfy the offsite parking requirement, is it because they were just using the garage for storage and then parking on the street?
No, just four cars, just four cars in the house. And then all of a sudden, you've got a car that's overhanging, so it was a matter of having enough space to make sure it didn't interfere, and then we had sidewalks in place, how do we make sure that we're not parking on the sidewalk?
Right. Yeah, I get that. Four cars in a house is, I'd say, more, more rare than not.
Yeah.
Of occupants. If, with guests and that, I get that, yeah. Well, you probably don't wanna park it on grass or anything else either.
No. All right, anybody else on nineteen?
I just had a comment, uh, came up tonight, about section nineteen zero five, uh, rewrite of one, off-street loading areas shall be located at the side or rear of all buildings,
Mm-hmm.
and shall not face a street, a planned, uh, PRD, or residential zoning district. So, this seems to indicate that every building i- is required to have off-street loading, is that clear?
I think it means that if you wanna have it, that's where it needs to be, right? If you have it, it should be located at the side or rear.
Correct, so I'm changing that wording, so that's, Sebastian's exactly right, so, and I know that comment got brought up during one of the hearings, we've never enforced it that absolutely every building has to provide these big loading areas. You know, doesn't, it, because it just, there's a lot of instances where it doesn't make sense, like a twenty-four hundred square foot office building, you're gonna have a huge, like, loading dock, like, that just, that's, no one does that, so, that's never how we've enforced it, so that's why I'm trying to rewrite this to basically say, if you are providing off-street loading areas, this is how you have to do them. I, I, I think more of, and, I'm rewriting this more in line with how we've administered it over the years, as opposed to that, that thought that we're gonna make every single off, I mean, we didn't make like the multi-sound people, they don't have a
Right.
a loading area, they don't need it.
Is there any way, just a word that, like, off-street loading areas are not required by the zoning ordinance? However, if off-street loading areas are provided, they shall be in conformance with section nineteen zero five?
I could put like, any proposed off-street loading areas shall be located, so it's clear that if you're proposing it, now you gotta meet these standards, but we're not saying you necessarily have to provide it.
Okay, that's great, I mean, I like that.
I still had nineteen oh four oh nine, sorry.
Oh nine?
Yes, oh nine, a parking, um, a parking needs analysis or study by an individual or firm certified to perform such tasks may be accepted in view of, uh, the parking requirements established here in the solution, um, without the need of a variance or divergence for conditional use or planned developments. I'm still in favor of a divergence or variance, 'cause I feel like that is, is kind of shopping around until you find a firm that will wanna give you what you want, that's my opinion.
So I don't play in the engineering field, but are these such people that do these things?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm sure there are, yeah.
Yep. There's books on this stuff.
So, yeah, I.
It's always weird if the people you're paying are gonna.
And a lot of it is, um, driven by the industry, like, the grocery people, they have formulas, they have studies, Kroger's got
Well, yeah.
decades of data to work with, so that's, that's usually what it is, and that's what this is trying to account for, if we get some really unique off-the-wall use that we were, you know, no one could really anticipate, that is special needs, maybe they have a parking study that says, okay, you know, here's what we actually need, based on, um.
I mean, I'm fine if you bring these studies forward, but I still feel
You just wanna.
we need to have, still say in it, that's my opinion.
I would tend to agree.
Yeah, we can strike that.
Yeah, I mean, you can bring the study forward, I'm fine with that.
So just strike oh nine? Um, yeah, I suppose we could, 'cause you were saying you're willing, if someone wants to do that, you don't really need to say you could do that.
It justifies the divergence if they wanna bring it to us, so.
Yeah, exactly, that'd be your justification, so I guess you really don't need it at that point, that section at that point, so just strike it, okay.
And what do you mean by the point underneath point ten?
What do you mean by what, on ten?
Yeah, nineteen oh four, at ten. Shared Anor Reciprocal Parking Agreements and corresponding actions easements may be accepted in view of required onsite parking spaces.
So, we ran into this one where, maybe somebody didn't have enough parking spaces, but didn't have enough land to do it.
Okay.
They worked with a neighboring property owner.
Yeah, okay.
To say that they could use the parking spaces to account for that, because the hours of operation were different.
Okay.
So basically, just trying to build that flexibility into the code.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
It's like when we talked at Campfire last month.
Yeah.
Do you have enough, if not, can you use the other lot, use all of the other written agreement that needs you? Okay, that's true. So there's an allowance to count those spaces when they are in operation, because these are not in operation.
Then nineteen oh five ten, I just have, this point A is weirdly formulated, I think it needs to say under ten thousand square feet of gross area.
Oh, yep, you're right. So, take out, take out the under.
Well, the under needs to be in front.
The under needs, so, under ten thousand square feet gross. Probably needs to say under or equal to, 'cause Yes. Like, in the rare instance I get exactly ten thousand square feet, I need to know what to do. Okay, so just a wording, yep. Got it.
Then the next one should be over ten thousand and one square feet. Technically.
Well, if it's over ten thousand and one, what do you do with ten thousand and one?
Well, ten thousand and one and more, how about that?
It's greater than ten thousand?
Yeah.
That's fine.
I got you, I'm just.
Got it.
Yeah, it could be, yeah, yep, yep.
Got it.
All right, next, anything?
Landscaping?
Twenty.
I got.
Come on, we got less than seven minutes.
I got twenty, section, uh, two thousand and three F.
Two thousand and three, I'm sorry, which, two thousand and three.
Landscape buffers, it's, I don't, I'm looking where it is, 'cause there's so much cratched out over here, two oh three oh one.
Two oh three oh one, got it, I'm with you.
Um, the F part, to me, I, I don't feel like, why do, why are we letting them do a wall? I personally prefer planting, oh, in some instances I can understand a wall, but in this instance, I'd rather have planting. I don't, I mean, definitely in, in like, because it's like a sad, sad, a sad bag buffer. Otherwise, you just get all these plantings away, and there's gonna be a wall instead.
What is this section talking about?
Or you could do a wall with less planting, maybe, maybe I'm fine with that, but.
Well, we did a wall for multi-sound.
Oh, it's, yeah, I see.
And the, the solid masonry wall comes out of existing section two thousand three dot oh two, so that, that list is largely mirroring what's already in there, it's just been, some of the wording's been expanded. I could change shall to may, and then that makes it.
To me, it's just like, I, I'm fine per se with a wall, I just like, if there, it's like combined with some planting, okay, but it's like also a wall is like definitely in the buffer area, it's like, that's, like, I can understand it next to someone, like, uh, when, when the buffer is on the, on the side lots, but here's like, it's also, if a car drives into it, I'd rather see a car drive into a bush than into a five-foot wall.
All right, may.
May?
May.
That gives you somewhat of the discretion to decide whether or not you feel it's appropriate for that specific situation.
Same in the point underneath, also F.
Okay.
And oh four C.
Oh four C. Yeah, basically everywhere that sex, that verbiage appears, right?
Yes.
That's where you're wanting to see it. Okay. Next.
Then I have some typos on page twenty-six, twenty-six, which is section two oh four, or is it, oh one B, one and two, it's islands, and faux is two. I'm sorry, where, where are we at, two thousand four?
One.
B one, end cap islands. No D in islands.
And then the underneath one point two is length to reach, that's all.
What was the other one?
Length to reach and point two.
Oh, yep, got it, I'll just circle them, fix those.
And then masonry wall again into four point three. And that's it for me.
How do you handle sound walls, are sound walls in here?
What do you mean?
The guards are screening?
Barrier? Yeah, like, uh,
Yeah.
highway sound walls.
Those would be in the right of way we went.
It's in the right of way of the utility, or the.
O dot builds those.
Okay.
All right, so that leaves us twenty-one through let's do twenty-one to twenty-five.
Maybe two oh twenty?
About halfway. There's probably five.
Okay.
Twenty-one through twenty-five?
Twenty-one, twenty-five.
Got it.
Get done while everyone gets done for their. Look at that, C chip, that one, that wasn't so bad, huh?
You'll get another bite at this apple once we make all these edits and go through all this again, so.
Oh, well, once we initiate it, get from there.
All right, real quick, public comment, anybody want it?
I wanna talk about section eight again, if you guys wanna, you guys branched through that the last time. So I sent in some stuff for you guys to review or whatever, did anybody review any of it? On the board?
Comment, so make your comments.
Well, I wanna, I need to have a con, you have a comment, talk and find out who's reviewing this stuff for me. Nobody's got back to me, I get no phone calls from you guys. So I need to find out why you guys ran over section eight, otherwise, we need to review it, and see what we can get, if we can come up with some changes on it.
Is, is it okay if we do it once we initiate it? I mean, we all have the email, but then we can do it when it's initiated, and, because we will talk about the whole document again.
You have a public comment period.
Public comment period does not.
You have a public comment period on this stuff.
Public comment period occurs once we initiate the document and the review.
For the whole document, though, right?
The whole document and the review.
Okay. And you're gonna have longer than five minutes for people to talk at that public comment?
Five minutes?
See, I said you can't go over those, that's the trouble with a public comment period for that stuff. This stuff almost needs to have a committee to review it. You know, you guys are lancing over this stuff pretty fast, Joe's filling it in for you or whatever, and you're just taking what he's giving you. This stuff needs a lot more attention. Sebastian up there is the only one putting most of the legwork in on this stuff. He's the one I hear from nine times out of ten on stuff. I'd like to hear it more from the rest of these members. So I demand that you guys put some more time into it. If you have any questions, feel free to give me a call, I'll explain what my issues and stuff were on this one. But you just can't change one zoning in one area for twenty thousand square feet and not address the rest of the parameters in that area. So, hopefully, it'll be reviewed, like I said, there's a lot of stuff in here, whatever, and I hate to see you guys going over it as fast as you are. And that's same with, you know, definitions and stuff. I have a serious concern with Joe's definition of building height. I can design a building right now and show you how that building can be forty-four feet tall with his building height, that a thirty-five-foot mean measurement to the roof. And that can be built in a rural residential district, of all of them with which you guys live in. Right next to, next to you, you can have a forty-foot, forty-foot tall building, according to his zoning stuff, on a thirty-five-foot building height definition. I don't think that's right in our township. So I think some definitions have to be, some considerations really have to be concerned with as far as how we're defining building heights and stuff. Especially for principal structures and for accessory buildings. They're different, you can't have an accessory building the same height as a building height, building on a property, doesn't look good, for one thing. So those are my comments on, on the upcoming stuff. Thank you.
I mean, once we initiate it, there will be also included all emails that we get, right? So, so we can talk about it, we can definitely email it, and we will review it then, because we will all get it, and then the review stage, we will go over it.
It'll go into the, it'll go into the record definitely as a part of initiation.
And my recommended plan on this was, once the commission gets through its first initial blush of review, was probably to send it out, a legal review, as well as a review by the Regional Planning Commission, not the required review by the Regional Planning Commission, I'm talking about even a, a review that I'm gonna ask them to do special for this. So if there are any big items or recommendations that they have, we can work through them before possibly even initiation of the document. So, yeah, there's still plenty of time, and I think right now the plan was to go article by article, not to go backwards on stuff, get through it all, and then have some of those reviews done, make any other changes you feel like you wanna make, then do the initiation, and then we go through the whole public hearing process, so there's, there's, there's still a long ways to go on this. At least, in my opinion.
Other business?
We do not yet have a new, another member appointed, the board has not, they've discussed it, not taken any action on it. Those discussions happen in the executive session, so I'm not really at liberty to say what occurred there. Other than that, like I said, your meeting next month is just the Northgate Office Project, which you now have, and the continued hearing for Olive Branch. Gosh, no, other than that, I've been, I've basically been working with all these non-residential applicants, you know, working with GMarkos, getting their stuff cleaned up, work with the Campfire Brewing guys, get their application cleaned up and ready for tonight. Lot of sign questions from people lately, so. The daycare that was gonna go in Northgate is now looking for another site, so trying to answer some of their questions, so. It's been a very busy first half of the year for us, especially in the non-residential front. I'm not sure when we'll get the final plans for Miraluna, I expect we'll see those at some point. I'm not sure really what their timetable is, but, no, is there any questions for me on how things are going out there? Seeing anything?
All right, next meeting is June tenth. Seven PM here.
Yep.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, nine thirty-three PM.